Good evening and welcome to the Southeast Elko School District Committee of the Whole for Thursday, March 16th, 2023. At this time, we are going to start with our committee reports. First up, education.
Hello, everybody. You have in front of you a couple of different things related to education. One is agenda slash notes for what we're going over. And then there is a larger packet that is the guidance plan that I'll talk about in a second. All of our items are potentially voting items for this month. You'll see, number one, special education. We have a student who was in an approved private school that is switching from that school to another approved private school. So that has to be approved by the board. The student has already made the switch. It just needs to be ratified for that student. The second thing under special education is our Camelot program. Camelot is our special education program over at Collingdale. We've got about 40 kids over there right now. That contract is up at the end of this year. So we had asked them for a proposal. We just got it last night. So we have not had a chance as administrators to go through that and see what's what with what they're asking. Once we get a chance to do that, which will be hopefully tomorrow, we will give it to Bob for his look. There is a chance this will stay on the agenda for March if everybody is okay with what it says. But there's also a chance and probably a greater chance that it will have to be pushed to April as we get a chance to review everything that's in there. But the contract itself is up and we will be working on that. The issue, if we don't have a Camelot program or a Camelot-type program, is those 40 kids have to go somewhere. So that is the second thing under special education. Number two on the agenda is, not on the agenda, on the notes, is the before and after care program. We are at a time where we have to make a decision. There are two motions on your notes in front of you. One of them is essentially choice A, amend the current contract, the date for the current contract. Or choice B is to not amend it and to go to an RFP process and hopefully have that wrapped up before the end of the spring in case we would be changing programs so that they're ready to go for the beginning of next year. Technically, both motions can stay on the agenda, but really only one of them can pass or one of them has to come off. But we do need to do one because we're starting to run out of time. The guidance plan is your thicker packet, about 40 or 50 pages. I also did email it out if anybody wanted an electronic copy. The guidance plan, which we're calling the state guidance plan, is required by the state. We are one of the first districts to do it because of when our timing was for comprehensive planning. The plan itself is light, in my opinion. We have to answer what the state asks. And right now, their questioning is very heavy on career opportunities, career in tech. And in my opinion, not that the state cares about my opinion, but very light on SEL activities. So we will, of course, comply with the state. This is the draft of what is due. It doesn't need board approval, but we're going to ask for it anyway. And then it needs to be submitted by the end of this month. What you have in front of you, about the first 30 or so pages, is the plan itself printed directly from the state website. We've done work with the state website before. It's not great and it doesn't print everything. So the back half of that big packet is the uploads and the supporting documents for the questions that require supporting documents. I wish it printed all in order, but it doesn't and I can't control the state website. So please take a look at that. If you've got any suggestions, we do have time to make edits. Most of the questioning is, do you have this or do you not have that? And if you don't have that, what are you going to do about it? There are two areas where we need to, quite honestly, improve in the guidance area that are in that plan. The first is, we do not have what's called SMART goals. A lot of our guidance activities are events. In March, we do this. Red Ribbon Week, we do that. We actually need measurable goals to see how we're delivering guidance services. So we will work on those for the upcoming year. And the second thing is, we don't do a very good job of asking after the fact, asking the kids and the parents how they feel we did with delivering our guidance services. So we're working on surveys for kids, exit surveys for eighth grade and 12th grade. Those will happen this year. And then further surveys down the line to just, we need to do something better. We need a way of capturing that information and improving the service. So again, that will be up for a vote next Thursday. If you have any edits, please let me know. I'll get it incorporated into the plan and then we will submit on time by March 31st.
I'm sorry, the exit surveys are for parents and kids or just...
In my opinion, they should be. Right now, we're starting with the kid ones because those are kids who are leaving eighth grade. We're targeting where they're leaving a building and essentially saying, how did you feel about the time you spent here related to guidance? We can do them in every grade. We can do them with every stakeholder group. There's nothing stopping us from over surveying, but right now, we're focused on the kids who are leaving the building.
I have a question.
Sure.
So the question is, so from the last plan, there's no data.
So there's two different plans.
Right.
So we have what I'm calling a district plan, which we've done every year. That was under Chapter 339.
Right.
The district approved that last June. The state plan is new. We're one of the first districts doing it. There are others. But data-wise, we don't have it as, because we haven't listed goals to report on, for lack of a better word.
So there's no goals in the comprehensive plan that addresses this?
There are goals in the comprehensive plan that address some of that. But again, please remember what I said in the beginning. Our comprehensive plan was more focused on SEL and supporting students, where this state plan, which we have no control over, in my opinion, is more focused on career readiness and career opportunities.
So do we have any career opportunities currently for students?
That's a really broad question. Can you narrow that down a little bit?
So does, I guess, the high school have any career opportunities for students to even have as an elective? Is it in the course selection guide? Do they have, I know they take that... The score to career testing, but what do they do with the data after that?
I'm not sure what you mean by school to career testing. School to career is a course that's required at the high school.
Naviance. What do y'all do with that data?
Not much, to be perfectly honest.
Okay, so there's no data to even...
There's not organized data.
Not organized data, okay. Thank you.
Anything else on guidance?
So just to piggyback on the Naviance data, when we did our collection for the comprehensive plan, it was noted and passed on that unfortunately with that data from the previous school year, about maybe, I want to say 600, I don't have it right in front of me, had actually completed it like it should be. So of course, we were collecting from 2020 here. So our first suggestion is to first make sure everybody completes it and not just some. So that should be on their first target, is ensuring that all the students have taken the Naviance before they can even have any data. Because whatever they did, you really couldn't weigh it in on it. So that should be the first part of what they do. And that was what we detected and put as one of the weaknesses for the high school and our plan.
The other thing with Naviance... Yep, good. We have two counselors right now. The board approved two more counselors. They're not here. So right now, it'll be an attempt. We can't handle 1,400 kids with two counselors. The other part of that is, this is not designed to be accomplished by the end of this year. The state plan is through 2026. Not wait, well, it depends on how long for what. So in order, so... Right, so implementing across gray bands, the first thing, which is noted in the, again, the state plan, is that they have to develop SMART goals. There's nothing, if we don't have goals that are measurable, there's no reporting of data that's going to matter to that point. Right. The most of the goals in the comprehensive plan are related to SEL, which is not the focus of the state plan. I wish that it were, but again, I don't get the control of what the state asks. I don't know that I'd phrase it that way. So the goals in the comprehensive plan should stay. In my opinion, we should be more focused as a district on SEL supports for kids because that's what we all talk about every month that we're sitting here. But I can't help that that's not the focus of the state-level guidance plan. Doesn't mean that we can't also do that stuff and we will have to be compliant with the state-level plan, but we are also going to have to go above and beyond with the stuff that they're not asking, which is the SEL stuff. All of that starts with what I think you're getting to is, how do we prove that we're doing well? You can't prove that you're doing well until you set a standard of what well means, which is where the SMART goals come in, which we admittedly do not have yet. Without it, I wouldn't say purpose. I would say they're working without a SMART goal right now, yes. They're doing the best they can with what they have. Number four on the list is field trips. There were a couple of locations, just like every other month, added to the field trip list. I believe you have that. There is a request for an out-of-state professional development trip. This is required by the 21st Century Grant. Ms. Hudson and two other teachers are going as representatives for the district. We are asking for board approval, one, because it's out of state, but it is required by the grant parameters. And then the last thing, Dr. Ryan, are you going to do the school calendar?
Did we get the updated list? Because I don't think I got it and I'm looking for a specific place to see if it made it to the list.
Oh, there we go. Hold on, we got it. Maybe we got it. Is there, I had the list without reading the 30 that are on here. Are you looking for some...
See the exchange game in King of Prussia?
I'm sorry, say it again.
The exchange game in King of Prussia?
I see escape room, King of Prussia. Is that the same thing?
Probably, yeah, okay.
It says March 2023, so I'm assuming that is that...
Yes, perfect, thank you.
Do they have these or am I handing these out, Shannon? Okay, yep.
We have three drafts, so I'm just going to give one out at a time so that it doesn't get too confusing. That's the extras. They can go out to the public out there. So the first calendar that you are receiving, as well as we have a chart, the chart is to just designate what... You only should have one calendar, yep. The chart is to designate the differences between the three calendars. So what we did was try to compile all of the information and suggestions that we received and organize them into three calendars. And then through our discussion, we could either bring back one calendar, as we've done one year. One year, I think we had three calendars and the board decided to vote that way. So the original calendar, we went through that in February. And so we kept everything the same there except for on the last two days in June, our two half-days for the students. That was a suggestion from, in green, it always designates half-day. And the last student day remained the same, which was the 11th. Last teacher day was the 14th. And so when you look at the chart, it designates when new teacher orientation is, when the starting of teacher PD is, the first student day, winter break, spring break, last student day, and last teacher day. So this was the original calendar that we went back to our, the school district's 2019-2020 calendar and started for pre-pandemic. So that was what we posted for everyone to make their suggestions as a result of that. Then we have draft two. And these are extras, Craig. In draft two, the changes, all changes will reflect from the original calendar. Everything went along the same until we got to winter break in December. We had quite a few comments which suggested that we move the day from being early dismissal teacher release on the 21st to early dismissal teacher release on the 22nd. So they gained that day, they wanted to gain that day and put it at the end. A lot of the references were in case we had to make up days at the end. They would not be ending on a Friday and have to come back on a Monday. As you see with this calendar, the only change that really made was that the teachers would get out June 13th and the students would get out June 10th. And then that would leave, if there had to be, I mean, yeah, if there had to be a makeup day, there was at least one day before the weekend of coming back. That's always grueling when you would have been out on a Friday to have to come back on a Monday. So everything else was pretty much similar besides the winter break. And then draft three is where there are the other changes. So for draft three, the first changes start in August. This calendar reflects schools starting for students before the Labor Day. In this calendar, you will see in August, the new teacher orientation, the new teacher orientation moving to the first two days of the week instead of the Wednesday, Thursday. And then the teacher PD moving up three days. First teacher, first student day being that 29th, which then means the students would come to school the 29th, the 30th, and the 31st. But those three days at the beginning in August would then be lost in, that would be less days they come in June. The next changes were in December. In December, that two would change to December, not having the winter break on the 22nd. On the 21st, it was supposed to move to the 22nd. And then in the spring break, it would mean being on break April 1st, which will be the Monday afterwards. And then that would mean the student, last student day would be June 7th, with two half-days on the 6th and the 7th. And last teacher day would be June 12th, with two days at the end in case there was some snow days that had to be made up. So questions? And you'll have time to, we'll email them to you tomorrow. I liked draft two, just with the little changes and adding those half-days for the students at the end. So it was just a little tweak from the original, but I'm not impartial to any of them. You know, we work year-round, so. Any questions about the calendar? Thank you. Next up, finance. Yes, ma'am. Yes. Yeah, you can, Dr. Ryan, if you would come, or Mr. Votes here, if it's about the seniors. Principal vote?
Yes, I have a question about the seniors. To my understanding, that the seniors that are graduating that are eligible is 139 students that are eligible to graduate thus far?
I'll work at the opposite way. 158 students that we're tracking right now.
Okay.
That are working on their pathways.
That's working on the pathways? Okay, so that's still not a guarantee, right?
No, it's not a guarantee. And they have to meet not just the pathways, but also all students have to meet the local requirement of earning 28 credits. And of course, that's ongoing and will be till the end of the year.
So we also have, for the ineligible graduates, according to my numbers, there are 99 students that's not eligible to graduate in 2023?
I don't know that number. I don't know if that number is accurate or not.
Okay, so, and for the Keystone Bio, there were only 44 students out of what, 300 seniors that passed the Bio?
It was less than that.
Less than 44?
The winter bio, that's correct, yes. It was approximately 21, 21 or 22 seniors. Keeping in mind that those students had not seen that material for two years and when they did, it was during a COVID year. 10 out of those 20, 21 or 22 students, 10 of those seniors did pass the Biology Keystone.
Right, but we only missed only a year due to COVID. So what happened to the year before?
They took the test. And we had some seniors last year that also, as 11th graders, they took the test. I don't remember how many 11th graders last year passed, but they did take the Keystone last year for Biology.
So how many, how many stu, how many seniors do we have altogether?
Roughly 350, give or take.
So we have 350 that, 21 only pass the Bio Keystone?
21 makes up of the juniors and seniors this year. Roughly about 10 seniors passed Biology Keystone in the winter time.
So, so what, I mean, is, can you explain to me what, other than the COVID, which I say it was only for one year, what is it, do we provide Bio, Biological, Bio teachers for these students?
Not the seniors this year, no. Not for, not for seniors. They're taking other science classes. That's the difficulty when a student doesn't pass, when they take the trigger course and Biology is traditionally a 10th-grade class. If they don't pass it that year, it becomes difficult then in the years going forward for the students to pass because they're that much further away from that material.
So you're telling me that we didn't, no, I, no, don't, please. So you're telling me that this year, the seniors did not have a Bio teacher for them to teach them?
No, they don't, they don't take Biology as a senior, no.
So how do we prepare them for the Keystone Bio?
Right, and historically, the Keystone pass rate in Southeast Elko is right around 20%, 18 to 20%. Has been for years. How do we prepare those students moving forward? I think the good thing with regards to the pathways is, if you don't pass the Keystones, that does not mean you don't have a pathway to graduation. Many of our students, the majority of our students that didn't pass the Keystone, passed the Biology course when they took it in 10th grade.
So, okay, so how many of those... So, okay, so how many of those tenth graders that are now seniors that pass the bio?
We identified twenty two seniors.
Jesus.
We, we identified twenty two seniors that had not passed biology in tenth grade out of the three hundred and fifty or so.
Twenty two seniors has not passed?
Have not passed.
So the rest of them has passed?
That is correct. And those twenty two had received letters for credit recovery. Some took it in the third session, and obviously, we're strongly encouraging them to take the credit recovery course for biology this last session in April.
Well, to me, that doesn't make sense because if it was twenty two that didn't pass in tenth grade, so why is it that we only have forty four that pass as seniors?
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't know where the forty four is coming from.
Wait, wait, no, wait a minute. Okay, so, okay, so what, what about the ineligible graduates? To my numbers, it's ninety nine students that's not passing?
Yeah, I, I don't have those numbers.
Okay.
And if they're not, that may be because they have not earned their credits, but I don't know that number is ninety nine.
Okay, so what are we doing for these students in order for them to pass? This is March.
We start, we start at the beginning of the year, we identify the students that are credit deficient, and we strongly encourage that they take credit recovery.
Okay, so has the parents been notified?
Absolutely.
When?
We start at the beginning of the year, they receive letters and they're sent home.
The beginning of the year?
From the beginning of the year, we have four sessions of credit recovery, and we start very.
No, 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 I'm saying for the ones who are in danger now.
They, they received a letter for, so for their seniors, especially if they needed for a trigger course to get on the pathway. They received letters from us with regards to what they needed. There were some students, there were roughly twenty two students that needed to take credit recovery for biology. There was roughly seven or eight that needed to take it for Algebra I, and it was approximately nine students that needed to take it for English nine. Those were the three trigger courses.
Okay, so you're telling me that you're sending letters out, what about robo calls? Have you sent out robo calls? Because what I'm trying to get to is the parents must know what their students are doing or they are at the verge of not passing or graduating. So this is a lot of numbers here of our students that we are failing. Okay, so you say that you don't know how many, okay, let's say it is ninety nine. So if it's ninety nine students that's not passing, what are we doing to help them to pass? Because, I mean, at this point, I'm thinking that we are pushing them to do whatever they have to do in order for them to graduate, which I don't think that's, that's okay. I mean, not in my book, because they should have been prepared since September.
And they, they've had those opportunities. Some of our seniors start and unfortunately have seven or eight credits at the beginning of their senior year. And that obviously is very difficult because they can only get one credit in credit recovery per session. So some of our students even know going into junior year, hey, in order to catch up, you need summer school too.
Okay, so when you send out letters, are they certified letters?
I do not believe they were certified.
Okay, so suppose a parent come up and say, well, I never received these letters. And you have ninety nine parents to come up and say, well, nobody from, from the school let me know that my child was failing.
Right.
This is March, twenty twenty three. I mean, what is it that we are doing to not only help these kids, but to notify the parents?
Right, and that's why in my, I hate using the word robo call, but my message from a few days ago, let the parents know that we are individually, those hundred and fifty eight students that still need to work on their pathways are getting a personalized letter, we're hand, we're giving it to the student, and then we are sending that a certified mail home to the parents as well.
Has the certified letters been sent out yet?
They're gonna be sent out next week.
So, again, this is March, so if, if you're sending, again, hypothetically, ninety nine letters out saying that these students are not passing, I mean, me as a parent, I would be very upset to know at a late date that my child is not passing or not doing what he or she is supposed to be doing.
In my opinion, there should be no reason that any senior parent doesn't know how their child's doing.
Why you say that?
Because we, all grades are in power school, have been since, even when the student, when that child comes in the ninth grade. And conferences are held twice during the course of the year. So it is very difficult for us, for a parent to say that they have no idea, or a student, that they have no idea that they're in danger of.
But don't you think it's still our responsibility to still let them know constantly that your child is not passing? Whether they are looking at, on the computer or wherever, but we still have the responsibility to let the parents know that your child or children are not passing? Right, so my question to you is, so what I'm trying to say to you is, it, it should be a constant notice for these parents? To, because at the end, what I'm trying to say to you, at the end, you're gonna have a lot of problems with these parents when they find out that their students, of their child or children is not graduating.
Every student has a pathway to graduation.
Every student has.
Every student has.
Right, but I'm saying that make sure that the parents know. Because the students, okay, you may could tell the student, but the parent is, is the one that we should be telling them so they can push their own child and children. So that's my question to you. Are we notifying the parents to let them know that they are failing? Because you're telling me next week, you're, you're sending certified letters, okay? Don't you think that certified letters should have been sent out before next week?
I can't speak for every district, but it's not, not usual, it's not routine that you send certified letters out to notify parents with regards to the status of, of graduation. I know my son who's a seniors here, in my district, they, they don't do that. So I, I am, I feel very good about the fact that we have been communicating with our parents.
Okay.
Coming through.
Okay.
We're doing, we have a Google sheet that we keep, and we're tracking our students. Every single student is being tracked in every single pathway. Mr. Stark and I know heads up a credit recovery, made phone calls
Okay.
to all those parents. The difficult that we had, that a number of students who needed credit recovery, they signed up for credit recovery, and then they dropped out of credit recovery. And that's a, that's a, that is a difficulty, that's a problem.
So what about cyber? Do you have numbers for them?
I do not for cyber. Mr. Silva would have those numbers.
Can you get them to us, the numbers?
I can, we can get those, absolutely. I don't know.
And what about alternative school, alternative?
That would be Mr. Silva as well.
I, I don't know. Is he here? I'm sorry? Exactly, exactly, exactly. So when can I have the final numbers?
And we are incorporating, Mr. Silva and I, we do work closely with regards to everything that we're doing. So the students at the alternative school as well as cyber also have those opportunities for pathways as well. They do.
So, okay, because I'm, I'm really concerned about these numbers. And I'm really concerned about, we are pushing our students to graduate, and they are not really prepared for the outside world.
All I can share with you is that this time last year, we're actually in a better position now, and the standard is higher to graduate than we were this time last year. We're in a better position this year with our seniors.
Can you explain that a little bit?
Sure, I think coming off COVID last year was, was very difficult for our, our students. So this year, we're a year off. I can't speak to why that is, but we are in a better place this year with the number of seniors with the additional Act one fifty eight requirement to graduate.
So if the Act one fifty eight wasn't here, then the numbers would be higher?
Possibly, yes, because we, all they would have to do is then meet the local requirement of twenty eight credits. So this is something that for all students across the state are working on pathways right up until the end of the year.
Okay.
Because again, one of the pathways is either apply to a four year or a two year college and get an acceptance letter. Some of those acceptance letters are kids that are applying, they won't come out yet for a couple of weeks, some have received acceptances, some are still waiting. And that's happening all across the country.
So even if our students even apply for a, a college, say Delaware County Community College, they can apply for it, but, yes, but are they actually going to Delaware County Community College? Or is this just a play for them to have something under their belt so they can get out?
So that, so that's, that's a decision they have to make. The state requires that they apply and receive acceptance. Do they have to attend? The state doesn't require they have to. What I think is going to happen out of this, which I actually, I'm a big supporter of Act one fifty eight, is our students, and I can only speak for our students now,
Right.
are applying, getting acceptance letters, and for the first time in their life saying, hey, I can go to college. This is a reality.
Yeah, it is.
Where last year, there was, because of no Act one fifty eight, a lot of our students were graduating,
Right.
but didn't necessarily have a plan after graduation.
Exactly, I mean, I agree with you on that. I agree with you, and that, that's, 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 that is a plan, huh?
Right, but that's not the only pathway. The good news.
That's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to get to. Right, 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 exactly, so that's why. I'm not blaming him.
I blame the board as well.
Right.
Again, we meet, we meet in for meetings.
Right.
And we're not addressing the important people, which are the students of the district.
Right, and, and, and believe me, I'm not blaming anything on you. I just need to know, and can you give me the numbers, the exact numbers that you have? That's, the ones that's eligible to graduate and the ones that's ineligible to graduate even for a cyber and alternative? And, and as you say, you say that you are sending certified letters out too, which that's a good thing too. Okay, that's all I need. I just need some exact numbers. And like I said, I'm not blaming anything on you, I just need some information from you. Thank you.
Mr. Vogt, can I just ask you a really quick question? I won't keep you long. And I, it's kind of, I'm looking for some clarity on one of the concerns Ms. Woodfolk had. So not for this current year, obviously, we're three months left. But moving forward, is there anything that you think our high school or any high school can do? When, like, we know a child fails a Keystone in tenth, and then we know they failed again in eleventh. Is there anything you think, because I know they're not gonna go back and take the biology class again. Like, I know a senior who had biology in tenth grade, she passed the class with a very high B. She didn't come in for the Keystone, the virtual year, she failed it last year. So is there anything you think in the future we can do to try to help prepare them to take the test again? Because it's gotta be disheartening to know, well, I failed this task test last year, and now they want me to take it again, and I'm even another year removed from the learning. Do you think there's anything at all we can do?
Sure, sure. And, and the reason we provided them the opportunity, we didn't want to deny the students. So I, I understand that only ten seniors passed, but for those ten seniors, now they are graduating. Now they don't have to go through pathways
Right.
because they've met that, so for that ten, it, it was worth that.
Okay.
There's obviously opportunities to do remediation. Again, what I share with all of you is, we do have a program called Credit Recovery, which is very specific, but the number of students that enroll that need it don't enroll for the program.
Right, but if they pass biology class.
No, they do not. The summer school, correct.
Right, so it's.
Remediation, it's Keystone remediation is what you would do. Well, we have within our contractual day, at two fifteen to two fifty five. But again, do we require those students, we can ask them to come, will they come? But that would be my answer, it was remediation within the two fifteen to two fifty five contractual day in, in the three tested subject areas.
Okay, well, for, just for some free options until we come up with another plan. Can we try to push things, not saying you'll be able to make students do it either, but like Khan Academy, every single course they offer is free. I know that the National Honor Society students have been offering tutoring. Maybe we can partner with them to help them understand what teacher, what kids really need this. Like, yeah, a kid may not need tutoring in their chemistry class, but if they fail bio two years, they may appreciate some tutoring to help them pass that Keystone. So I mean, just anything at all we can do. Because I know a kid going into that Keystone that's already failed it twice doesn't feel great about taking that test. And I'm against standardized tests, just so you know. I'm not in favor of them, they are not developmentally appropriate. But at the same time, and as long as the state requires them, we're kind of stuck.
There, there are many different things, there's curriculum, there's many different conversations that we had with regards to our students doing better in the Keystone scores as well as in PSSS.
Now, for the credit recovery, well, you are communicating with the students, are you communicating with the parents as well?
We have not sent them certified letter, but we sent a letter home.
See, I mean, that's the problem, because I mean, letters could go anywhere if it's not certified to make sure it's going to the right, you know, place. What was you, Kevin, you say?
Well, like I said, we are sending the letters home certified, but I would tell you, I do worry about that.
Yeah.
And, and the reason I worry about that is, you know, these are seniors we're talking about. These are students that are seventeen, eighteen, nineteen years old, have been students in the district for thirteen years.
Right.
At what point, you know, we, we need active engagement on, on both sides. And if we're sending that, you know, if that's the expectation that we're sending certified mail, that's so many dollars per student, is, is the, is, what's gonna happen is, is that gonna cause a parent to be, or a family to be less involved? Rather than more? And we'll have an answer soon for that.
I have a question.
Yeah, understood. Understood.
Exactly.
So I think that we should be sending certified letters to parents. And so that you're covering yourself, your staff members.
Absolutely.
I, I understand. No, I understand.
I have a question. Is there anything set in place for the end of eleventh grade? Sort of like a tally of going forward to senior year?
So we've already started with the conversations with ninth, tenth, and eleventh, twelfth. And actually, for any parents that came for the eighth grade transition evening, we already started talking about pathways and things like that. I would tell you, in my experience in, in the district, has been that early in the, over the, towards the end of the summer, many of our districts in Delaware County and across the state thought that again, the state would kick this Act one, this, this Keystone requirement
Right.
down another year, because they've been doing it since two thousand fourteen.
Right.
Once that didn't happen in the fall, I was with the other principals in the other, in the neighboring districts in Delaware. Once that didn't happen in the fall, I was with the other principals in the other uh in neighboring districts in Delaware County, and the IU was catching up and informing us, okay, here's what you need to do. And that was September and October. So there was a lot of conversations. The IU, yeah, because the IU gets a lot of information from the state, and then they share that information with us with regards to pathways.
So you're telling me nobody at the district level has any information about what Department of Education, nor do they go on the website to see the information?
Many districts rely on the IU because that's a close contact. They get the they get regular updates. School districts don't often get regular updates from PD.
No, no, no. I get regular updates because I I'm invested, and the kids are at attention, right? And so that's why I brought it up months ago. So if we just don't rely on the IU, I I would believe that the district also does their own two buildings as well.
Ms. Monroe, we have that information.
I have one more question for you, Ms. Vogt.
And and we have emails where that information is shared.
I I did have another question. So the process of the certified letters, um, without signature, certified letters aren't delivered. So what is the next step when those letters get returned? Is there a process for that? Have you guys had protocols for return certified letters?
We actually, because of uh of uh the number of letters that we're sending, and when we looked at that, uh, we did call the post office, so we are going to be able to put labels on the certified because they handwrite those. Right now with two guidance counselors, it's a heavy lift. So we um, post office will accept those, and then when we get the back, two things are going to happen, because when we get, when we send mail and it gets returned, there's two things. First of all, we're obligated then to reach out via phone call and or email to the parents to try to get them, you know, on the on the line. But also, there's a concern that perhaps the parent does not, or the child does not live in the district when we get mail
Right, yes.
returned to us.
Yes.
So it's really twofold.
Yes.
Okay.
That's understandable.
Um, and I I can come and do the labels. I'm volunteering. All right, thank you. That was all my questions.
Oh, yes, um, in terms of percentages for the credit recovery, I'm curious, the seniors who are not graduating, what percentage of them did not choose to participate in credit recovery? Do you have those numbers?
I don't have those numbers off the top of my head. I want to say roughly fifty percent did not.
Fifty percent?
Did not participate. If, so for example, if twenty-two needed biology.
Right.
It was a good percentage of those students that did enroll, but then they stopped coming.
And it was the parents notified?
Yes, they were.
Okay.
Yes, they were. And Mr. Stark had personally called those parents.
Okay.
And so we're we're making, because the last credit recovery now is April twelfth. It's the start of the last session. And we are making it very clear, your child does not have a pathway to graduate. If they didn't pass the Keystone, they have to pass the three trigger courses. If they did not do that, the only way to do that between now and official graduation, if they want to graduate with us in June, is to take the credit recovery courses. It's the only way.
And since we're on YouTube, cutoff date to sign up is April seventh. Is that right?
The first date's actually April tenth, and they're allowed to act since. So if they are seniors, we will allow them to start until April twelfth, but then they can't miss any of it.
Okay, great.
All right, thank you for that. Um, so you said fifty percent, Mr. Vogt?
Yes, roughly in my conversation with Mr. Stark, and roughly fifty percent dropped off.
Of the seniors who are not, who are notified that they are in danger of not graduating. Fifty percent of those students did not choose to participate in credit recovery, is that what you're telling us?
Were enrolled, but then they dropped off.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
One more question, sorry. Um, the recovery information. Um, have you guys tried to have like a a parents' assembly, like sort of to gear these parents up for what's to come? For the four recovery sessions, just to inform them in the beginning of the year or possibly in the summer? Is there a sort of like a parent assembly, just to break down what recovery um credits is, like what it what it is, what it entails? Um, what happens if they drop out, just basically laying out everything?
Not not a parent assembly, but we did send, it's a very specific letter, and explained credit recovery in depth.
We had a parent open house in the beginning of the school year. And I also made verbal connect calls to every senior who needed a credit recovery course, and I sent that to every email and text message.
Oh, wow.
Phone number, anything that was in the computer. So all those seniors got that for each session.
Oh, thank you.
That's good to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vogt.
I'm finance.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Um, I think what I'll do is to just cover the agenda items first and then do the budget presentation, budget discussion. Uh, so under finance, uh, the first three items are traditional resolutions that happen uh every year. Uh, the first being Delaware County intermediate unit, where the district uh has an obligation to contribute to uh that general fund budget. So this year, uh, you can see the numbers. Uh, their budget is ten million, three twenty, five seventy-nine, and our contribution is twenty-seven thousand, uh, three seventy-one, fifty-seven cents. Uh, Delaware County Tech, uh, we have students that uh uh attend and take uh get, receive instruction from that organization. Uh, their budget this year is fifteen million, nine eighty-four, six hundred ninety-nine, and our uh contribution, this particular contribution is based on students that attend. Uh, so this year, uh, it is eight hundred twenty-four thousand, eight thirty-one. Uh, the third item is the special education uh budget. Uh, their total budget at the IU is twenty-two million, eight hundred eighty-four thousand, seven zero five. And again, similar to the uh the uh technical high school budget, uh, this contribution is based on number of students that receive services from Southeast Daco uh uh with the IU. So this year's budget is one million, six hundred forty-eight thousand, nine hundred ninety-two. Item four is uh purchase of radios. Uh, there are fourteen, there are thirty-four that we're purchasing. Um, those are what that, just so everyone knows, uh, I'm going to change item four to ratification because that uh order has already been uh placed. Uh, there are uh uh ten, uh, no, fourteen, uh fourteen that are for our staff uh because some of the uh um bandwidths, for lack of a better term, uh have expired on our older uh radios. And then there are twenty uh for our uh new engagement uh with Safe Corridors for those individuals. So again, those items have already been ordered, so I'll change that to a ratification uh for motion for item number four. Let's see here. Going into non-voting finance items, uh, we, I just went over the one item that we're purchasing for uh the Safe Corridors initiative. Uh, that's, that's the uh radios and also uniforms that we'll be purchasing. And then Dr. Winder will cover uh the second item.
In effort to have a smooth transition, because um our engagement with Safe Corridors is um new for us, and it's new for them. It's just a front back. Yeah, they're the same. Um, and so we had a transition meeting based on, um, just hand me that one back. It's it's mine. That's just-
So this one is yours?
The staple.
The staple copy.
So I'm not flipping.
It's easier to read if I don't have the flip.
Since I'm presenting, yeah. Thank you. Um, and so with the new venture, we wanted to, we went through the contract to look at things that we need to make sure that we are prepared for on Monday, um, which is when they will be coming to uh the school starting this Monday, the twentieth. So uh our liaison will be Mr. Vogt, and um their liaison will be Mr. Dane Dandridge. Um, actually, he was at our last board meeting. Um, and then Mr. Vogt was going to provide calendars, the emergency plan. He sent those two things yesterday. Um, add two people to the global calls so that when we are having like an emergency closure, um, uh, delay because of weather, anything like that, then he would be able, they would have that knowledge. And then they will also um attend, um, one faculty meeting per month. Um, the workday, we're starting out with it being seven to three thirty, and that includes a lunch and break for the new um members. And then they'll massage the time after the ten days to determine if it needs to be to three o'clock, two fifty, whatever. But they wanted to look ten days to see how long it took to get everyone off the pl- uh property. There's expected to be twenty employees come Monday. All clearances will be sent to Mr. Baxter by tomorrow. Um, Mr. Vogt is going to provide a binder in the office for live signatures, and the employees will also complete a Google Doc. And that was at the request of Safe Corridors so that they can then um do the check and balances to ensure that the payments meet the attendance. Um, if there's going to be absences, Mr. Dane Dandridge would notify Mr. Vogt. Uh, we just discussed the different things that they had in their contract that they would do. They said they would assist with fights, um, monitor hallways, stairways, assist with arrival dismissal, cafeteria, breakfast and lunch shifts, mentor students, and be an advocate just for name, um, a few. Um, some responsibilities that we needed to make sure we are prepared was the reflective safety vest. Um, Safe Corridors uh purchased that, and they're giving us the receipts so we can reimburse them. The raincoats, they were not sure if we're going to really need them because the weather is now changing, especially, you know, last week. We had quite a few warm days, and as Mr. Butler said, the walkie-talkies are on order. Mr. Butler and Mr. Silva will reconcile to determine the monthly payment and ensure that they receive their monies on time. Mr. Vogt is going to schedule a an assembly for March twenty-second um so that the staff and the students can meet um our new our new partners. Um, they can't do the twenty-first because we already have an assembly with Banky um Jefferson. Um, they will have a weekly debriefing just to talk about the progress of the week and plan for anything for the upcoming week. Um, for PD, our our contract with them, we will be paying them for providing PD to their staff, so they are going to provide us with an outline, and they also said that we can um give them um suggestions um and for things that we see that might need some professional development for their staff, and that was our meeting. So we, yes.
Um, so when Safe Corridors, so when we're at committee meetings such as this, um, will they give their committee reports separately, or does that fall underneath safety? Will we get reports from them separately, like on the agenda, how?
So, um, we hadn't discussed that far, but if that's what the board would like to see, um, it's no problem.
Well, wait a minute, um- I have a question, I have a question, real quick. Um, so, um, Cardinal Points, do you have the minutes from that meeting?
That's what this is.
Cardinal Points.
Oh, Cardinal Point. So we didn't have, Cardinal Point is not new to us.
It's not, wait, uh, I've been in this board for a long time. This is the first time I've ever wrote it on Cardinal Points to be inside Academy Park.
If you allow me to explain what I mean by not new. Not new to us in the form of, we have a security job description. We have, since I've been here, um, gotten security with different companies, and they follow our job description. This is brand new to us completely, and I would think that you, as well as the committee and the community, would want us to make sure that since this is brand new, that we are going to have a meeting to make sure we transition. The meeting itself was very positive, started off with a positive bang, ended on a positive bang. I think they felt more comfortable showing up Monday, knowing that they could count on us to have the things that we said, and then we were able to ask them. So, um, Cardinal Point, they're following the job description that the district has in place for security.
But are they actually doing the job description that the Southeast Daco has in place?
To my knowledge.
So they-
And Mr. um, Mr. Rosnoff is here, who supervises them.
So Mr. Rosnoff meets with them, he has minutes from their meetings with them, the same thing as Safe Corridors?
It's-
They have professional development as well?
That was never required.
We don't pay for their professional professional development.
So they don't do any professional development with our district because it's our job description?
They do professional development with their with their staff, but we are not paying for it. And we have a contract where we're paying Safe Corridors eight thousand dollars to provide-
We're not paying Cardinal Points?
Not to provide the PD. We're just paying them for the people being here. They provide that on their own.
So we pay Cardinal Points to do what then?
To provide security.
And they don't have to have any training, any professional development, the same way Safe Corridors is having?
They have, they have it, but they don't charge us to get it.
They they conduct their Act sixty-seven training.
Oh, okay.
And and they provide a Act sixty-seven training for guards here, for district security officers in pass.
We've already used it.
So they that that's their, they have a, it's a forty hour-
So you debrief with them weekly too?
Not weekly, no, but I do correspond with the director of schools to make sure that the officers are doing what they're supposed to be doing. I mean, there was never a requirement or I was ever asked to to have a meeting. So I I mean, I've been-
So if a fight breaks out, what is their responsibility?
The responsibility is to separate, engage, correct.
Had they been engaging?
To my knowledge, yes.
And that was the question that I had as well.
And melee's too?
Uh, you'd have to specify exactly what you're speaking about. I mean, I I I go to every single school, so I don't know. I I'm all over the place.
Um, because I'm not understanding how, um, people are being hurt, that we have all these people from corridor, um, Cardinal Points, and staff members are still getting hurt in the school.
And I I I
You see what I'm saying?
I hear, I I'd be, I would be willing to discuss that outside of here. Uh, I mean, just because of the specifics and
Okay.
what you're speaking about.
Okay.
You understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
I I I don't have a prob-
I'm just saying, like, if if you're telling me that they're supposed to engage
Right.
and it's it's more security because Cardinal Points is here, right? But now more staff members are getting hurt. It's not adding up. You understand what I'm saying?
I I I understand to to a point what what you're saying, but-
Then that means, are you really engaging? Like, I've been at Academy Park, and I've seen Safe Corridors out in the parking lot. I mean, Cardinal Points out in the parking lot, onto their car. During the work time.
Well, that, again, that that
You see what I'm saying?
But that would be hap- that's something that I'd be willing to discuss with you, the specifics and evidence. Like, what what timeframe? Because then maybe I can articulate what that is. I don't know. I can't, I can't stand here and say exactly what they would be going to the, what they're going to their car for, if that's a break or at some point, I Well, no, I I I'm using that as an example. I I'm just simply saying that I can't specify or speak on that if I don't know exactly what it is you're talking about.
Both organizations, they have the same playing field.
I and I agree with you.
You see what I'm saying?
I I hear you.
I don't want you to have to run around, you doing Cardinal Point, now you doing Safe Corridors, you have a list full, that's, you're one person, sir.
I don't-
You're only one, and so I understand that-
But I don't, I don't mind running from place to place. That's that's my responsibility.
But, um, a lot of people getting super burnt out around here.
I hear you.
And, uh-
And that's why I try to get word.
He's not over Safe Corridors.
He's not over-
He's not over Safe Corridors.
He's not over Safe, who's over Safe Corridors?
Mr. Vogt is the liaison.
And you as the principal?
That was his choice. When I spoke to Mr. Vogt about someone else- When I spoke to Mr. Vote about someone else, Mr. Vote was very adamant that he wanted it. And I said.
So those things that you're raising an issue about or a question about, I'm more than happy to discuss that in a session. But I, specifics, I don't feel comfortable doing that in a public meeting. Oh, I hear you. Right, I, I just, I don't want you to feel like I'm in a voice, alluding. I, I just rather, I just rather, I'd rather do that in a closed session instead of in public. Okay.
Thank you.
I'd like to say, Mr. Butler, for the budget that you had discussed with us, is it possible that when you're doing the budget for the school year, the percentages that we would use, that you would try to get the lowest one as possible? And also, if that could be to the point that there would be no real estate taxes raised at all for this year, that would be greatly appreciated because, you know, our community is suffering because of this. Moving forward, this is something that we have to be very much concerned about. So I would appreciate if you would look into that. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, so Ms. Harris Johnson, your point is very well taken. Just so you know, that my approach is always to ensure that we are, one, being conservative and also making sure that we're taking all constituents, students into consideration in order to provide instruction effectively. But that is a key point of when we go through the budget process. What I will have tonight, this will, this document will be posted on the website. But this, what I will review, this report is, other items that I have on the next slide. We'll talk about Act fifty seven, which is the local tax collection law. Here's what we know, twenty-three, twenty-four budget expenditure, budget expense challenges. We have twenty-three, twenty-four expenses by object code, I'm sorry, twenty-two, twenty-three expenses by object code. We also have twenty-three, twenty-four preliminary expenses by object code. And I'll review very quickly the ESRS grants and the impact on the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. This is, the charter school analysis is just a review from my previous slides. And there's an item, a slide for purchases, contracts and other. And then I'll review the twenty-three, twenty-four general fund budget timeline and what the next report will look like. As I mentioned in the last meeting, when we initially started this document, it was planned to do, to be on a quarterly basis. But then I, and just as a matter of being consistent, I'll be presenting a similar report on a monthly basis until we get through the general fund budget process. So this is the report that you will see tonight. We'll talk a little bit about financial reports. In fact, I'll go over each one as I, I'll talk about it as I go along. So the financial report is, and projections, is it ongoing moving calculation? We, I start at the beginning of the fiscal year and I look at transactions to see how they're flowing or they're consistent with previous years. What was the impact with any outcomes from COVID? What is the impact with federal dollars that we had in the budget in previous years that have already been spent, so we're not, they're not going to be reoccurring? So all those line items are looked at from the expenditure point of view. The revenue point of view is what are the new calculations in the funding that we'll be receiving from the Department of Ed? What do our federal grants, Title One, Title Two, Title Four, Title Three grants look like as far as allocations for Southeast Alco? So all those things will be part of future calculations and the next report. So the next report that will be at the committee of the whole, you'll find that I will calculate objects one hundred and two hundreds, which are salaries and benefits. And I'll get more, in more detail as I get to those reports. Let's see here, let's move on. So let's talk about Act fifty seven. So Act fifty seven is a new law, a new tax collection law. This is for tax notices that are going out for, essentially for individuals who recently bought a house. And there was some confusion as to where the tax bill was supposed to go. For example, if they didn't receive it, then they can put in a waiver so that there are no future penalties or additional penalties on those tax bills. I had mentioned the last meeting that in the case where we have difficulty getting the tax bills out, we will adjust the schedule so that all taxpayers are are in a situation where they're not being penalized because there was a matter of us getting the tax bills out within a reasonable amount of time. So we'll extend those due dates to prevent those penalties from going into place. After that, I will say that after the face value, it goes into penalty. It is not the practice of the district to waive penalty because folks have had a number, a significant amount of time to either do installment payments or to pay those tax obligations. We don't get many of those requests, but there are some that I will, that will come directly to me and I will assess. Sometimes it's a mail issue, but then there's evidence that the folks did receive the tax bills and they just didn't pay their tax bill on time. And they're trying to get around paying the penalty. So we hold that part of the responsibility to the way the policy is written. And as I said, there are very few cases that I would bring to the board for the board to consider. So here's a section of, here's what we know. So some of the, you'll see that it's historical. So with student enrollment, we had four thousand fifty-six kids in twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three. We're staying consistent. We had five hundred ninety-five kids in charter schools. At some point, it was up to six eighteen, so I'm going with the six eighteen going into twenty-three, twenty-four, just to be conservative. And hopefully that number will drop. Last year, I think I had eleven million, eleven million, excuse me, eleven million two as a budget amount for charter schools. This number may change depending upon enrollment. I have it at twelve, twelve million five. We have over six hundred staff members. And the employee retirement rate in twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three, it was thirty-five point two six. This year, this is a one-time calculation from piecers and a conversation with the Department of Ed. They're dropping it down to thirty-four percent employer contribution. That's a one-time. The projections say that next year it'll be at thirty-four point five seven. These are some other challenges. I already covered the charter schools, so we have special education, special placements, approved private schools. I covered the retirement cost and transportation costs related to special placement, special placements in charter schools. And then, of course, as usual, the contractual obligations, salary and benefits. This is just a quick slide on what the current year, twenty-two, twenty-three expenditures look like. So the total budget amount for this year was one hundred three million eighty-seven thousand three hundred thirty-three. And you can just see the categories of salary benefits, so forth and so on. Now, this next slide is for twenty-three, twenty-four. So I said in the last meeting, I'll cover items, object codes three hundred through nine hundred. That's purchase professional services, purchase property services, other purchase services, supplies, property, other objects and other uses for funds. The other objects and other uses of funds are our debt service payments on loans that we have for building renovations that occurred in the past. So the other objects are, is the interest payment, is the interest that's due on an annual basis. And then the other uses of funds is the principal amount that's due every year. And these schedules are built out every time there's a borrowing. The borrowings are, the, the plan is to make the payments consistent so that we know what the amount is going to be in future budgets. You also see in purchase professional and technical services, that's contracted services. So that modification of the number are recent contracts that the district has entered into that are contracted out. The purchase property services, that amount, the four million eight, is a reduction of federal ESRS funding. That, that's money that we've already spent. So in this case, there's only so much more that we can spend, so I made that adjustment. And other purchaser, excuse me, other purchase services are, that's the five hundred. And the majority of that money is the charter school payments. And then the goal is to keep things flat. So if I find in supplies, property, those two categories, that we're not going to spend that money, then I'll adjust those down just to reduce the budget and attempt to come to the goal that Ms. Harris Johnson was referring to. This is just an overview of what is left. So we have, we already spent ESRS money, one. ESRS two is already spent. ESRS one was one million four oh six. ESRS two was five million seven thirty-one or seven, no, five million seven ten. And we have ESRS ARP set aside. I'm just going to pop down, that is eight hundred ninety-seven thousand for that. And then we have ESRS ARP. And that total is eleven million, I want to say five seventy-one, no, eleven million five fifty-one. And of that, we probably have, I would say, around five or six million dollars to spend. The bulk of that money will be in the area. Let me just back up and I'll take my cursor over here. So right now, we're, you'll see some resolutions in, on the property committee that will talk about replacing antiquated equipment. And this is saying that we plan to modernize a classroom space, an instructional space in each of the buildings. So we've been talking about what, what can we do in some of the buildings? For example, at the high school, we're thinking that we're going to give the library a facelift. At Delcroft, it'll be another area that we're trying to move classrooms to the front of the building so that when families come in, they'll see what our plan is with the new initiative is for future renovations. You will also recall that we had the architect to do a feasibility study. And we're coming up with a plan of, in fact, at the last meeting, it was presented that what the plan, the ultimate plan should look like and what the costs associated with that are.
Question.
Oh, yes.
About that plan. So I know the architect was here last meeting. And so what, what building do you think would be the priority so that if needed to be put in the budget just as a cushion? Which building is like the priority building?
Well, if for, for us?
Yes, well, we know all of them are.
All of them are.
I mean, I'm, I'm just saying, like, like Academy Park's busting out the seams. I don't think it's really was built for fourteen hundred. Say that we get all the charter school students back, right? And then ninth, tenth, eleventh graders, is there room?
I think there's room, it'd be some mod, so, so at the high school, there, there have been some classroom spaces that have turned, been, based on my observation, have been turned into, I don't want to say faculty lounges, but different workspaces for staff to have some type of PD or provide individual instruction and that kind of stuff. So we might have to look at those classrooms and, and turn them back into active classrooms. There are also some other areas that have been modified and turned into office spaces or storage spaces. So we'll have to look at all those things, and the architect already looked at those things and has looked at those things in all the buildings. The, the most important school that needs attention, obviously, Sharon Hill. But the, the difficulty with that school is that it needs to be, it has to be a new building. So part of the conversation that we've had is do, how much money do we put in to Sharon Hill? And is it going to be in the newer wing? And then the plan would be to build the new building and then raise the old building and just work around it. So that's sort of, that's kind of the plan, to build off of the newest part and then get that situated and then tear down the old part.
So I guess that would be more cost effective to do it that way instead of, you know, we all know that all the buildings need to be done. But some buildings, like you said, need to be done in like twenty years, ten years. And so are you fixing that into the budget?
No, right now, we're using federal dollars to get us through it. Fixing into the budget would be borrowing, refinancing our existing debt and borrowing new, new money. So that's where I'd said a couple of years ago that as we look at the fund balance, our savings account, we had that dip which affected our credit score. So we've recovered from that. But we can't, we have to be consistent in not allowing that number to reduce at all. Moody's, Dun &amp; Bradstreet, they all want to see that there's a movement. And the movement can be a hundred thousand dollars a year. They just don't want to see it dip down five hundred thousand dollars. And this past year, we ended with five, almost five point three million dollars in savings account. So for that number to dip down would be problematic when we've had three years of it increasing. So we had a negative one point two, went to five hundred thousand, went to four point nine. And then we ended this year with five, almost five point three. So the plan is to keep that dollar amount stable or increasing a little bit so that we have the capacity to borrow money and refinance existing debt to do renovations.
Okay, thank you.
This is just a charter school analysis. You can see how many kids and what schools they're going to. And again, the goal is, you can see this number. You can bring back twenty-five of those kids and have a huge impact on the budget in Southeast Alco when you look at these numbers. I had mentioned earlier about purchases. So we have purchased door alarms for APHS. We have purchased two additional weapons detection systems. We added more cameras at APHS. And as I mentioned before, the thirty-four portable radios. We also have two scenarios. We increased four guards. And then at a later meeting, we increased another nine guards. Then we have twenty safety advocates. We have one contracted assistant principal due to vacancies at APHS. And then, this is just a point of reference on other decisions that were made. We had the course coverage because of not having enough staff to cover all the courses over at the high school. And the, the amount associated that was, an individual would get three hundred dollars a day to do that. There were a hundred and eleven days left in this school year, so that's that cost. Then we have prep coverages, so if a teacher is absent and there's no one to cover, I have it to be determined because that number changes by pay. And then we have the bonus. that number changes by pay, and then we have the bonus, in the payroll of the twenty-fourth, we paid approximately five hundred eighty-two people, five hundred dollars to stay for being on the job and not leaving, and then, that was for July through December, and then January through June, it's, the amount is seven hundred fifty dollars, and there are the costs associated with that. So, in the last couple of months, the cost, the obligation of funds is three million ninety-seven thousand. So, my responsibility, because all of these numbers, although some of them are going to come from federal dollars, some of them are going to be covered from the fallout of not having, not being fully staffed, so that will come into play to balance out that number, but the balancing game will be, I have to make that cost neutral, because I don't want that five point three to dip down. So, there's a lot of hard work that we'll be doing, I will tell you that we're doing a, a staff audit, which will consist of analyzing each school location to ensure that we're covering every single position, we have our active employees, we have inactive employees, we have newly hired employees that only lasted with the district for a couple of months, and then they left, so I just want to make sure that we're capturing all the names and all the replacements, so that we're, so that I'm comfortable that when we, that when I present, that it's sound and it makes sense. So, all that stuff will be happening in the next couple of weeks, so we'll be querying a lot of information and analyzing. I will tell you that the medical benefit cost has remained flat, which is a godsend for the last two years, so I don't have to worry about that, and that was a first look, so there's a possibility that that number will be even better when it comes to the second look. So, we're part of consortium with the other fifteen school districts in Delaware County, and we blend our numbers together, and then Blue Cross Blue Shield will calculate what our, what our share in the impact is on our, our experience, and there's a little calculation in there for experience with other school districts, so we're always hopeful that the Wall &amp; Forge Radners, Chi Chesters, and all those other districts have a good experience rate, because it helps us. This is just moving forward, we already covered up through objects three hundred to nine hundred. I'll continue to talk about projecting out this fund balance, so I can see what it looks like, and, and after we do this audit, I'll have better data to know that we covered that three million dollars obligation, and moving forward, I can then calculate a better number, plus, I believe that there may be increased allocation from the Department of Ed that will certainly help us out. So, everything's preliminary, but we're doing all the hard work now, so that come May and June, then the conversation is an easier conversation and makes more sense. And in the packet, it'll just show what the next dates are. The next report, again, have financial reports and projection discussion, objects one hundred, two hundred, salaries and benefits, a review, again, the federal projects reports, just in case there's any new funding, and then I'll have what our numbers look like in the current year for charter schools. That's it, any questions? Okay, thank you.
Human Resources?
All right, good evening, I'm just going to go through our actual committee of the whole board report agenda, most of what I have on my committee report is covered in that document. So, our report starts on page two, we have a total of five professional resignations, one of them being an assistant principal at our high school, and then we have five On page three, resignations, we have a total of six, one non-instructional aide, the other five are transportation, some of them have been individuals that were in on maybe a substitute basis, but was not returning and haven't had work in a while, so they are going to be termed in our system. Under number four, we have three employees that we are bringing aboard, two at Sharon Hill School and one at Delcroft. We are ratifying the employment of two classified employees for our transportation department under number five. We are approving the employment of two more individuals in our classified employee section, one for transportation and one for a building aide. We have a transfer of assignment for one of our food prep cashiers, actually going from our food services department to an instructional aide at Harris School. We have three individuals who are on leave of absences, that's numbers eight through ten. Our musical costumer is named here number eleven, that is Cheryl Daly. Number twelve, thirteen, and fourteen, you will see our summer programs to be voted on, Twenty First Century at Darby Township School, the dates are there, they are the same for all three programs, June twenty-sixth to August first, Monday through Thursday, is going to be the expectation for those programs, so that is Twenty First Century, that is our extended school year for number thirteen, and our summer school program at Academy Park for number fourteen. On page six, we have two individuals joining our Twenty First Century program at Sharon Hill School, one is a substitute teacher, and one is going to be one of our supplemental lead teachers for that program. The only other additional information that I will share, that's not a part of this report, is on the second side of my committee report update, and that is going to be the job fair info, which is under number eight, there were two job fairs in the last couple of weeks that was attended, one was better attended than the other, so we did Temple University, and then we did one down at the University of Penn, the Temple University had really good traffic, they actually did a half day for their practicum teachers and student teachers to come into the actual university and go around to the different tables that were there in those sessions. University of Penn was a little bit lighter, however, we got about half of the attendees to come to our table and find out information about our district, all of those individuals that signed in and that we got resumes from, we have been in contact with, just to check in with them, some of them actually applied, some of them had phone calls and made connections with us and had conversations, so we are moving for some of those, towards some of those May graduates, and that is my report.
Mr. Baxter, I have two questions. One, how soon can the resignations be posted as job listings, do we have to wait till we vote next week? That was really one question, sorry, I know I worded that as two. And then, also, I'd really like to, at this time, if the board could request human resources to, or the negotiation committee, to reach out to the teachers' union, to request a draft and start negotiations for an MOU, to get our veteran teachers that have been here for a while and have had some contract freezes in the past, to get their caught, them caught up on their steps, because from my understanding, other districts are offering to hire teachers and pay them for all of their years of experience, and with the end of the school year coming, I think it's really important that this is something we focus on, so that our veteran teachers want to return next year and are getting paid what other districts would pay them.
So, you had a two-part question, the first one was in regards to postings, so, as far as the postings go, it really depends on the position, those teaching postings, classified postings, all of those, yes, those are postings that go up when resignations are sent in, however, with where we are in the school year, we want to make sure that some of the individuals who are currently here, that may be putting in requests and then may be signing up for transitions either within the building or throughout the district, they're not filling those places, because we are making sure that we're not hiring two teachers kind of for the same position. So, it, it kind of depends on what the scenario and situation is. Your second question was about opening up a negotiation, so that contract was just negotiated, I know that's a brand-new contract, this, I believe, is the first year, we actually have three contracts that's coming to an end this year, as well as some individual contracts, again, I don't know how that would be possible to open all of those contracts up at the same time, however, it is something that has been, we've been taking a look at and had some conversation about.
We started discussing it in December, so.
I'm sorry, Mr., what's that, so we've had that, we, we, in the past, before we've been on the board, we have had that conversation before, and it'd just be up to, you know, make sure that the finances are there, and then that the board agrees, just stuff like that. So, we have talked about in the past, in past years, in past contracts, I'm only telling you that because I was chairing those, those contract negotiations.
Okay, I, I just need to weigh in a little bit on this, so, this, one, it's, it has to be discussed in the executive session, right, because it's a contract.
But we've been told that three different meetings, and it never gets discussed.
Let me finish, let me finish, so, understand that this was a negotiated contract, this was a bargaining unit and the district that negotiated a contract, this was not a meet and be told, this was not an association, and we have a, a percentage amount, and we're just telling, whether it's the, the administrators, or whatever other bargaining unit, or association it is, that the teachers' union negotiated a contract, you're suggesting, or the board, or there's conversation about suggesting that there be an MOU on a contract that was negotiated between two parties, and, so, there has to be a negotiation, it can, it cannot be, it cannot be an MOU, because it was years, that wasn't, it wasn't one year that this occurred, it, it occurred over a number of years, and, and the leadership of the union agreed to it, everyone agreed to it and signed on for it, so to go back and try to fix what was negotiated, one is a monumental, monumental undertaking, two, the financial impact on the district is, is unaffordable, I'm, I'm just saying that, so we, we can talk about it, but I think you will find that to go back and fix what was negotiated and make, it's not even a conversation about making good on it.
Well, I'm not, I'm not asking for them to go back and get all of those years of pay, and when I first asked about it in December, I didn't ask necessarily for negotiations to open right away, I asked if it could be determined how much it would cost us, and then we weren't given any data, so how can we make a decision based off of what we're going to think it's going to cost, and you're saying it's unaffordable, but we were never even given an amount, even though it was asked for.
Okay, well, not make an excuse, but, but, but things have been more than busy, and a lot of moving parts have taken place during this school year, so that, trying to calculate that is, again, another monumental undertaking, so we'll get to it, I mean, I'm doing on the budget, I just said we're doing a, an audit of that, and part of that audit can come up with moving individuals on a scale, but the conversation, it can't be certain individuals, you have to select a group of affected people that would move on the scale, so you just can't pick one part of the scale, it has to be how it affects everybody, because everybody was affected by that step movement, so that's why I'm saying it's monumental. It wasn't that we took Masters Step Twelve, Master, yeah, Master Step Twelve and said, okay, for this year, we're not moving you off of Step Twelve, it was everybody in that bargaining unit got held back a step, so that's what I'm saying, it's monumental, and the cost associated with that is a lot.
It was a very, I can curl with Mr. Butler, because I have crunching numbers like you have on crunching numbers, like every other day, we were sending him.
I'm really worried about teacher retention, that's really what I'm worrying about.
I mean, Mr. Baxter's report here, just Academy Park, we need twenty-two staff members, so if the, and we always know, every school district, everywhere, at the end of the school year, you get more resignations, so what are we going to do if the vacancies at Academy Park jump up to thirty or forty, or what, what are we going to do, and what are we doing to try to get teachers to stay?
Do we not want them to stay?
Well, getting teachers, getting staff to stay is, is a group effort, so, yeah, there has to be a serious conversation about what we need to do as a district to get individuals to stay, and again, there are so many different moving parts over these, over this last school year, and even over the last months, and, and the list of things that have to be discussed, it has to be a comprehensive list, and some of the things on the list, I will tell you, are going to be very difficult conversations that everybody has to have, so, it can be done, but everybody has to be on board with having challenging conversations.
Butler, could we even, I know in some years past, we did freezes on certain groups, right, even after the contract was settled, because we had to make payroll, we had to make budget, we had to pay our bills, so if need be, could hypothetically, in the near future, could we see that happening again, like start from the top up, like start from the top down, because usually we started the teachers and then back and forth, but we never start from the top down, so if we need to freeze the whole district, then what will happen? That means no increases, no raises, none of that, if we, if we start having this dip into that fund balance.
Well, it's a, again, it's a conversation, and, you know, the, this year, the state says we can raise taxes six point two percent, last year, they said we could raise taxes, let me finish, raise taxes five point two or five point three percent, after I got done with the budget, it was, we just did three point nine, the state told us we could go way further than that, I know, and based on my experience, what folks can afford, that that is unreasonable, and it's crazy, so, I, you know, so when I look at going through school buildings, and I'm having folks, and I'm looking in closets, and, let me back up, so, since I've been here, and the principals know this, not, and administration know that, there has not been one department that has done, presented a budget for me, to me, I do it myself, so that I know exactly what's going in, so that there isn't any waste, because that's the situation this district was in, so, and I'm going to continue to do, to do that, so that I know that when we're talking and having these discussions, what, what it is that we can and cannot afford, so, and we'll use every bit of federal dollars that we can, but it's, it's a huge conversation, and like I said, there, there are many difficult parts of that conversation that everybody has to be on board with having, and stick to it, and stick to the decisions, so.
Oh, no, Mr. Baxter. She'll be all confused, okay, Mr. Baxter, can you tell me, when are we going to start interviewing of getting counselors at the Academy Park High School?
As soon as they start applying.
So.
So, we've been interviewing everybody who has come into our system, I did meet someone at University of Penn that has a counseling certification, so I've been reaching out to that individual as well, so when we learn of candidates, then we reach out to them.
Okay, so, the board had passed for two more before the third counselor went out on leave, so, it's been that long, or it's been that much of a struggle to get someone in as a counselor at the Academy Park High School, because, I mean...
So Academy Park wasn't the first school. It was actually Knight Academy. So Knight Academy, uh, we actually filled with someone over there. So that was the primary opening that we had. Academy Park came a couple of weeks, maybe about a month ago now. So they are, what's coming up next? So you're right, before the actual two was added, we already, already needed the one, so.
You talk about that night, um.
At Academy Park. We already needed the one that was going out on maternity.
Right, exactly.
And then the board added two more. So we're still looking at, um, you know, the one long-term sub, and we're looking for the two additional.
Okay, so this question is for Dr. Winder. Uh, so what is it that we going to do for these counselors? Because those two counselors is going, I mean, I'm quite sure they are overwhelmed with their, with the work that they are doing with all the students from ninth grade to twelfth grade. So what is it, I mean, i- it, can someone help them or what can be done?
So we attempted to try to do the supplemental and remember that was unacceptable. And that would've been the only option that we would have is to try to hire someone who could be more of the boots on the grounds and let the counselors do the official work. But if you remember, I want to say, two months ago now, you were very adamant that that should not happen. And if nobody's applying and we can't use supplemental, there's nothing else we can do.
Okay.
And that's why we were trying to be creative.
Right, so we going to leave two counselors in the counselor office to maintain from ninth grade to twelfth grade and sit back and say it's nothing we could do?
No, he's hiring. We're, we're still interviewing.
Yeah, uh, they, they were supposed to be hiring since October, when we passed it. That's what I'm talking about. So, I mean, this is March.
So we're still interviewing. I'm scheduled to go out for, um, a job fair, for two different job fairs. Every cabinet member is going out for job fairs. I mean, we cannot make people apply.
Right, but I'm, I'm still saying that, uh, I mean, you, you have to realize that you only got two people that's working in that office that's maintaining from ninth to twelfth grade. So, I mean, it, there's no one that you can bring into that office for a couple of hours a day to help them, uh, to do whatever. I mean, I could volunteer. I was going to say, I could volunteer.
That was our attempt to bring someone in that at least had a degree that could do as much as possible and the counselors do the rest. What would be the difference if we grabbed the English teacher and brought them in? It was the same thing that we tried to do two months ago.
Right, I mean.
So are you now saying it's okay?
No, well, see, i- w- was I the one, one of the ones? I was.
You were the one. You hollered and you, ooh, you said, I did my research.
Oh, yeah, you're right. You're right, okay.
So we had to back it up.
Yeah, you are absolutely right. But still and yet, I still can't understand why we still have two, uh, counselors in there that you expect them to do, uh, all this work from ninth grade to twelve. I mean.
If nobody applies and that is certified and our hands are tied that we can't at least bring a supplemental to help, there are no other options. Any teacher that you pull is going to be in the same category.
No, but I mean, you, you can't pull anyone just to do mailing.
The supplemental person could have done all of that. That was our. She's doing.
I'm curious about the social workers.
Well, with the, with the counselors, it's very difficult because that's SEL. You know, so you, you, you can't, you can't find any. I mean. Yeah, that's just, that's almost like finding a chemistry or a bio teacher. They're not just walking around, you know, I mean.
Aren't the social workers equipped to support?
They're strapped.
Yeah, but they are equipped to support.
They are, but they're, you know, I mean, and we're getting people wanting evaluations, you know, you work in the school system.
Yeah, you're right.
So, you know, so, I mean, my question to you, again, if we can find a supplemental to work in there and help out, I mean.
Well, well.
Yeah. No, no, we were going to do.
What I'm saying is, there are people who write supplemental and do their supplemental job during a regular school day.
But this was going to be a full-time person working like some of our elementary sup- supplementals with a degree, coming in to assist where they can. And the guidance counselors would do the main course-type things.
Yeah, but the PDE doesn't, no, it, it, yeah, don't, would, would not allow that. But I do remember, I did say that. PDE would not allow that, so yes. Uh, but so, I mean, something else, I mean, I, I mean, for me, I could come to the office and, and help out with the mailing or whatever. Because, I mean, it does, I mean, when, when I go in there and do my rounds, it, it's just to see the frustration and to see them being so overwhelmed with this work. I mean, something has to be done.
Absolutely. Uh, uh, and I, I mean, even for a supplemental, you were saying PP, PDE wouldn't allow that. But if we weren't calling them a guidance counselor and we're just sending them there to do what, what they can, that's not, we're not labeling them as a guidance counselor. It's no different. So you're saying that PDE would be okay with you coming there to help out?
Well, no, I mean, just like the secretary. I mean, the secretary only could do for certain things in that office. But what you, you guys was trying to do is have somebody in the office to, uh, work as a counselor without a certificate.
But they could do all of the administrative work. Is that correct, uh, Mr. Baxter?
Can do the main thing.
That the person you were, um, suggesting you were bringing in would be administrative, is that not correct?
They were labeled supplemental.
Supplemental.
Right.
No, they wasn't. That person, listen, listen, that person was called in to do, uh, to have our office to do a couns-, the counseling, uh, work, not the supplemental.
It, the principal would determine the job descriptions of who's doing what. We were going, we were calling them a supplemental. I mean, go back and pull the, 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 the board minutes. It was supplemental.
Yeah, but why would you take that person in, into a class for her to be trained at the time that she's working in the office? Remember when you, remember when you guys was going to have her to be trained or to get a certificate?
Emergency cert, you mean?
Yes.
Right.
Which is what are supplemental, some of them.
Right, but they have to have a certificate before they sit in that office.
So.
If we're hiring them as a guidance counselor.
If we're hiring them as a guidance counselor, but we weren't hiring them as a guidance counselor. And that really would have been a question, that really would have been a question, like when we went over everything upstairs that day. And maybe we could have done a better job explaining it. However, just like with anything, when you are standing at that podium in front of a crowd and fire is coming at you, you can't say so much because some things you can't really say and other things you're taking off of your, your game. So if we are doing what we can, when we do the best we can and we get no, it's no. So we are willing to find a supplemental, Mr. Vogt and his guidance counselors can meet. That person can do the things that are not so key to counseling and the counselors could do the rest and they would have some help. Or right now, it's two people in the guidance office. We're going to still go. We're going to still go to job, um, fairs and we're going to hope that we can find some people. But a little bit of help is better than none.
Absolutely. Yeah, but wait a minute, wait a minute. See, you, you're not going to twist words around with me. Okay, because, yeah, yes, you are. Because the last time we had talked about it, we, I, Mr. Baxter said, no, I said to Mr. Baxter that you can't have anybody sitting in the, uh, a counselor as an acting counselor while she is, while you take her to school, through school for her certificate, but yet you was going to have her as an acting coun- counselor. That's what you, yeah. But no, 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 it wasn't supplemental. You didn't even use that word supplemental at all.
We'll, we'll just email the.
All, all you got to do is go on board docs.
Oh, yeah, it's there.
Go back to two months and see what the person was typing.
Okay, yeah, all right. Okay, well, that's what I'm going to do. But still and yet, so if, if, if the counselor falls back on their work, then what's going to happen?
What do you mean, what's going to? We're going to support them as best, as best we can.
Okay, so you going to wait until they fall back? That's what I'm asking. Are you going to wait until they fall back?
I'm not waiting for anybody to fall back.
Right, so that's what I'm saying. If, if, if you know there's two people that's working from ninth grade to twelfth grade, eventually they going to fall back somehow.
Right. Tried to provide a solution and then you were against the solution that was provided.
No, I'm not even answering that. Dr. Winder, I, I'm saying to you, um.
And now we're coming back.
I'm saying to you, Dr. Winder, uh, so if they fall back, are we going to sit back and wait for them to fall back? Or, uh, what is it that we can do to make sure they on top of their work?
Well, all we can do is see if we can find a supplemental to provide support. Mr. Vogt and the counselors can work together to determine what things that supplemental can do while we're still interviewing and going in job fairs to assist until they can get more assistance. There, if it took us that long to get someone at Knight Academy.
Wow, I mean, ever since October, that, that's, that's crazy.
You're talking about specialized people. It's just like if you wanted to get somebody to teach calculus. So a lot of people can teach math, but they can't teach calculus.
Oh, I, yeah, okay.
So then we have to do the, the best we can. And in that case, we might have to find somebody to take one of those other positions or do some of the lesser math. They may not be certified, but they may be able to do it because they have a science degree. And then the person that is truly certified with math that can do it would have to now take that calculus class. You have to be able to be creative sometimes. And we need to be creative and we, but we have to have that leeway. We can't get here and the answer is no, no, no.
Yes. I, I missed a something for, um, I have a question. Um, Mr. Vogt, you're still here. Um, um, I'm sorry, I just had a question about, like, we were talking about vacancies and, I, I, I mean, you didn't have to get up. Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Baxter, you still sit, standing there. But we're talking about vacancies and not enough teachers and filling spots. Um, how are we on the volunteer list that went out months ago? Do we have any of those volunteers? Were they in, were, were you in contact with them? And if so, have any of them listed any of their specialties or any of their, their talents introduced to our district?
Are you speaking, are, are you mentioning the, uh, Moms on Mission, Dads on Duty?
No, I'm actually, I'm talking about, we made a volunteer list way back in October when this district was heavy with a lot of things. And that started circulating, I believe it was October thirteenth at Academy Park. We had a big special meeting and I was introduced, it was a, a lot of parents. And, uh, volunteer sheet went out. And I'm just asking about, were, how are we with that list? That in, were there any positive results or any talented constituents that are linked, uh, available to come?
There has not been.
Yeah, it was, it was a list. Yeah, it was a list.
There was a several.
It was several, yeah.
There was a list every meeting, special meeting we had.
Yes.
And in that, back then, we had about three.
Right.
So in those three meetings, we only had five volunteer?
Yes, and like I said, I don't see them.
So have you got in contact with them?
We, our efforts have been, like I said, Moms on Mission, Dads on Duty, we had twenty-eight people sign up wanting to participate, emails, multiple conversations, emails out to them. Unfortunately, um, none of those people, um, chose to volunteer. We then, because, uh, the board approved safe corridors, we pushed out a third correspondence to all those people saying, here's an opportunity, that's a paid opportunity, if you would be interested, hope that they would come on board.
Well, um, th- th- this question is for, um, Mr. D'Orio. Uh, can, can.
Thank you, sorry.
Mm-hmm. Can a, uh, a board member, uh, volunteer to, uh, like, send, uh, mail out to, uh, uh, any department that's needed?
For, for what purpose?
Um, okay, just like we was talking about for counseling, uh, counselors. If they have a massive mail that needs to be sent out, can a board member help out? Uh, send, send, you know, fold up and put it in the, um, envelope and send it out?
Well, well, with the approval of the board and through coordination with the admini-, through, through coordination with the administration, the administration would have to be part of the process, yes.
Okay, so we can.
I mean, you're talking about clerical stuff.
Right, exactly.
You could do that, but I mean, the board would have to approve the individual board member to do that or whoever is going to do it. And then that, that would have to be done through the administration. It can't just be, it just can't be from the board member out to the public or to the parents or whoever it's going to. It would have to be funneled through the administration. In other words, you would help the administration do their job.
Right.
Yes, with the approval of the board. I mean, there's no law against that.
Okay. Because if, that can be at times that I can do it, um, to help out in the, uh, council office to do clerical work. So if the board would agree to it, um, and if they, once they agree to it, then we could sit down and talk about it. How about that? Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yeah.
All right, quick. Okay, all righty. Parent Student Advisory.
All right, uh, Parent Student Advisory is not much of an update. We are still looking at a tentative date of April nineteenth. Uh, we have to decide on method, uh, or location, I guess, of delivery, whether we're doing the live Zoom or hybrid again. And then we have to get together as a committee to decide the topics for that, uh, event. But we are still looking at the nineteenth unless you want to add anything else?
No, I'm definitely still looking at the nineteenth if, um, possible. Um, before we make a decision to do hybrid, can you see if Harris would have the capability to do a hybrid? That, I don't want to pick a location and then say, yeah, it'll be hybrid and then not have the same resources that we had at Academy Park's library. Um, and then I just want to make sure that on this agenda, because we've been presenting a lot of information, I would like to leave half, at least half of the meeting to be open discussion from parents and students that want to share. I want to kind of start moving it more towards, um, a committee that allows the community to share with, with us, the administration and the board, with, um, some of their concerns and their needs or maybe even suggestions or ideas.
Academy Park may, may not be good because right before the play, they're going to be doing everything there. The play starts tonight.
I'm not saying do it at Academy Park. I want to do it at a different school each time. But I don't want to decide on Harris and then say, yeah, we'll do hybrid if we can't do a hybrid. Um, if none of the other schools have the capacity that Academy Park's library does, um, I would, you know, maybe consider just a Zoom option because a lot of people did join via Zoom.
Harris is doable, having worked there for a couple of years. Um, as long as the crowd doesn't get too big in the library because then it kind of spreads to the side and the camera doesn't pick up on anybody on the sides. The better option would probably be Darby Township if we're looking at a one-to-eight building in the library, yeah.
All right, yeah, if anyone, if no one's opposed, um, and then also, Dr. Winder, does the nineteenth fit your schedule? Okay, all right, so then is everyone okay with shooting with Darby Township then for the nineteenth of April? Okay.
Have you spoke with your committee about any of this that you're presenting?
At the time, I believe my committee is Dr. Winder and Dr. Ryan because the only other committee member requested to be removed from the committee. because the only other committee member requested to be removed from the committee.
I was also on the committee. I am on the committee. Remember when, um, you first came on and we met in Dr. Winder's office?
Yes, and I was under the impression Dawn headed the committee and you were on it, cause you were president. And then after you stopped being president, Dr. Winder put Mrs. Abney on the emails.
You do not have to be president to remain on that committee, and since I did not resign, I would consider myself still a member of the committee.
Okay, well, you're welcome to attend. I didn't see you at the last one. Oh, you were on Zoom last time, yes. Well, I just went by the correspondence that was on the email, and when Mrs. Abney became president, administration added her to the emails. She ended up responding and putting all the school board members on it, so I believe you've seen them all. Okay, that's fine. I'll see you April nineteenth.
Okay, um, so that's Parent Student Advisory. Want me to do policy too? Doc? Okay, uh, policy is relatively light until the end. Um, the February meeting was essentially the three second readings you see on the agenda in front of you. Uh, two of the second readings are because budgetary limits got raised at the state level and we had to change our policies to reflect that. The last, uh, policy for second reading is the now infamous nine oh three that we've been going over all year. Uh, that is up for the second reading again, and will hopefully be approved and possibly done with, uh, after next week. I, I did say possibly. There are no first readings this month. There was a Policy News Network released about two weeks ago. It is all homeschooling policies, so they have been given to Dr. Reddick Smack for her review, because that department's under her supervision, and we will be bringing those forward in April with some recommended changes. Uh, the only other discussion, should the board want to have it, is in front of you, you have a stapled packet that is titled Discipline Guidelines. If you remember from October through about December, the board was having conversations about repeat offenders and what to do with repeat disciplinary offenders. That conversation turned into, uh, a recommendation to create a draft guideline, not a draft policy. The draft guideline was then gonna be worked on by a subcommittee, which was done a couple of weeks ago. The work of that subcommittee was alluded to last board meeting to say that it was coming up, and now given to you in public forum, um, for your consideration. You have a couple of things that you need to consider. One is, is this something you wanna tackle now, or is this something you wanna tackle later? Or at all, to be honest. If this is something you want to tackle now, you then have other questions of when is implementation? Is this for next school year? Is this for the fourth marking period? How do we align ourselves so that everybody's aware of any changes that may be coming? And then the last question would be, is this a K to twelve guideline or a third grade, fifth grade, high school, wherever you wanna draw the line? The status of the packet itself is divided into three categories. There are your quote-unquote lower-level infractions, they're on the first page. The second page is mid-level infractions, and then the last pages are major or potentially expellable infractions. Each infraction has a sort of step-by-step guide on what to do, what the consequence would be. And then eventually, for some infractions, students who continually break that rule would be subject to discipline, potentially removing them from their current environment, grade level, school level, um, to either alt-ed, cyber, or an alternate location for a period of time. The bigger question for the board to consider, is this something that you wanna undertake? And if so, when, with who, and how? It was a subcommittee of the entire board that came up with the draft in front of you.
My recommendation is that whichever way you decide to tackle it, is that it's not implemented until the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, because it's going to be a beast to try to go back for all the people that fell in these categories previously. So whatever the committee wants to do to work on it, let's just make it implement. And if you're going to implement it for twenty-three, twenty-four, we need to have it done by June thirtieth. Get it voted on and get it in the hands of the principals, so that they can have it in their handbooks, so that everybody's on the same playing field.
So it's, it's a committee, no, it's a committee, um, but the board will vote on the final, um, make the decisions on the final. No, I'm sorry, you might have missed it. No, he did. It's okay, you may have missed it. He certainly, he certainly sent it.
And, and we talked about it ups, we talked about it upstairs, too.
I'm on the committee. No.
And I'm on the committee.
Right, and the board is gonna decide as a whole.
If, if, I was gonna say the same thing. It does need to be talked in a public forum, even though it's not policy. I would recommend that it come to a board vote as a directive to the administration to implement, and that does require public discussion and board vote, and Bob's smiling, so I think I'm right.
Jeff, Jeff actually, um, will, will inform us, right. Dr. Ryan.
My turn.
So I just, since the four committee members are here, I just wanna make it clear that, um, I, I am in support of the mid-level and the major infractions, but I disagree with such quick es- escalations for not, some of these non-compliant, non-violent incidents. Not every single one of them, but, yeah, like, when you look at them, like, late to assigned area. Okay, so like, does that mean late to school? Like, are we seriously, like, if a kid is late to school twice, we're gonna suspend them? If they forget their ID twice, we're gonna suspend them? Like, I, that's heavy. And I just, I just wanna make it clear before you guys discuss this again, that I'm not comfortable with how fast that escalates. Well, this is their first draft, that's why I'm exposing it now.
And just to be clear, that draft is not necessarily a recommendation. The purpose of that draft is to get something on paper as the starting point for the discussion. You're welcome.
Property.
Mr. Curry is at a conference. I'll do his property report. So there are three agenda items. Uh, the first, uh, is resurfacing the Academy Park High School track, uh, and that's at an estimated cost of one hundred sixty thousand. Uh, item two is to resurface and redesign the gym floor at Academy Park High School, and also to, um, replace the basketball backboards. Uh, this is in line with the, uh, cri- cri- uh, identifying areas in the school that we want to highlight. Uh, so at Academy Park High School, since there's a lot of activity at the field and in the gymnasium, this is one of the areas I had mentioned that we're going to be looking at, the library area as well, and what that entrance into it, we've already, uh, come up with, uh, uh, replacement of some of the furniture in there, and just to redesign that area. The third, uh, is to get our, uh, engage our architects, uh, our architectural firm GK, uh, GKO to, uh, redesign and prepare amount of specifications for this mod- modernization, uh, initiative. Uh, part of that will be to also, I'll prepare a, a resolution in the future to, uh, replace antiquated equipment, uh, and furniture. Uh, again, that's to, this is just for beautification and to modernize some of our areas. The non-voting item is, is that during spring break, we're going to shut down the power at Sharon Hill and Delcroft. There are just a couple other punchless items with the HVAC system that was installed, uh, that need to be, uh, corrected, and, uh, that's just a heads up, so, that everybody knows. Yes, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Sure, no, I'm done.
Back about, um, the track area and about how it's frequented by other people. I believe we did, it's the same area, right?
Uh, we did, and then there was a gentleman that was at the meeting last week.
Who spoke about it.
Oh, that, okay, so, um, uh, so, yeah, uh, it's been going on for a while, but I did talk to Mr. Curry about what we can put into place and what that process looks like, uh, because there are an enormous amount of, uh, outside organizations that just hop on that field. And if we're doing the track replacement, you, you remember last year we have moratorium because we, uh, reseeded and regraded the property, uh, the field, uh, so that worked out. People were pretty respectful then, but then it sort of went back, so, we'll give you an update on that.
Yeah, can we get, I think we talked about signs possibly?
Yes.
Going on the gates, okay.
Well, we've been had that, uh, the signs, but it didn't really mean anything.
Like, I mean.
They tear them.
Tear them down. Oh, you just said it, right.
And even when we locked it up, they even, uh.
They cut holes in the cyclone fence.
Yeah.
So are we, is there any way, maybe it's a, a borough question, but is there any way to, to say, fine?
Yes, so we just have to, we have to work with the distant, different municipalities to make sure everybody's on board and there's understanding that if there is a call, then there'll be a citation, uh, those kinds of things. But we can't, we, we need the help of the police departments to pull this off.
Can, can I ask you a question, uh, Mr. Butler?
Sure.
When are you thinking about, um, doing the track, uh, repairing it?
Uh, that's going to start as soon as school is over. Oh, this, these are like right after school ends, these, uh, things will be going into place.
So how, so how long would it take, cause you're gonna strip the whole, uh, the track, right? And then you're gonna lay down, uh, new ones, right?
No, this is just resurfacing what is there, because our track isn't that heavily used. We don't have to tear it completely up.
We did that before.
Yeah.
So you say it's, it's gonna be like in June?
Yes.
And it should be done, what, within thirty days?
I would think so.
Between spring and fall, sports, that's our only window.
Like, how are you be able to close that down then? There can be lots, how can you close it down while it's getting done? To help with the, the.
We'll get it, uh, I mean, there, there may be a, a situation where we have to hire outside contractor to, uh, to monitor what's going on. Yeah, exactly, so we have, yeah, we have cameras that we're installing on the field, or upgraded cameras. Uh, so, yeah, we'll just have to take a hard line to it.
Safety?
Mr. Rosnov, you want me to do your report for you? No, I'm kidding.
Well, uh, based on the immense amount of pressure from some of my peers, to expedite my portion of my report, uh, I'll split it with you.
You got it.
Good evening. Should I take my time and phonetically tap it out, or should I?
Okay.
No, I'm not that good.
I do have cards.
Okay. Alright, so I only have two things. Um, first of all, uh, the update for Cardinal Point, uh, security placement. So we have currently four su- uh, Cardinal Point security officers at APHS. One at Sharon Hill, one at Delcroft, and one at Knights Academy. Now, the one at Knights Academy, um, he splits his time there and, um, at APHS. Once there's a second guard there, that second guard will go to Sharon Hill. So you'll have two guards at each building, but that, those guards at Knights Academy would be split. And one would go to the high school, one would go to Sharon Hill. So we're just waiting for six more guards to be placed, and then that will meet the requirement for the thirteen total, uh, guards being placed at the building for the request. The other update is for the Evolve system. Uh, the units for APHS, um, one of them was delivered, so we have three units, two in the front lobby, and one at the rear entrance. And then starting on Monday, those, all three of those will be manned and operational. So they're operating now, but the schedule will go in effect on Monday for placement to have, um, staff where they need to be for those to be, uh, operated pro- uh, properly. Um, and for Knights Academy, that's up and running also. It'll be finalized tomorrow, being hooked up, uh, in the cafeteria area at Knights Academy, and that'll be operational as well. Any questions?
Can you say you have four, uh, security officers at Academy Park?
From Cardinal Point, yes.
Oh, yeah, Cardinal Point, where are they located?
What do you mean? They're spread throughout the building. They're assigned each floor. Guards are put on each floor to give coverage to clear the hallways. They don't, they're, they don't congregate, nor are they placed in one specific area. And then throughout the day, and then throughout the day, they have different posts to make sure that there's coverage. Yes, so they have a post in the morning, on arrival, during, between eight and ten thirty, and then from ten thirty to twelve forty-five. And then for twelve forty-five, they move all over the place. So they're not in one central location.
Okay, alright, thank you.
You're welcome. Alright, thank you.
First card, Maria Jenkins.
Um, so before, good evening, before I, um, addressed was on my card, I just had a few things to throw out there, um, from a thing that, a few things that were mentioned. Um, I know I won't get answers, but just to put them out there. Um, a question is, how do we lessen the number of students that are needing credit recovery year after year? You know, if we can start working there also to try to be more proactive, to try to lessen that number, um, than maybe the worrying about, you know, of course, the reaching out to parents or trying to reach parents that don't wanna be reached, um, you know, is, is another issue. Another thing that was up on the slides that I couldn't really see, so I'm questioning. Um, there was something on the slides about finance, and it had budget challenges, um, and it says special education, either not funded or underfunded. Again, I wasn't able to see clear, cause this TV wasn't working. Um, so if next time, you know, next meeting, you would be able to just share a little more of what you meant by, um, budget challenges, special education not funded or underfunded. Um, I myself volunteered, I have all my appearances, I did them, you know, the way you guys requested for the parents. I've never received the email, any type of follow-up. Not my spam, nothing. So I'm not sure if I was missed on the list, but I was at the meeting and I'm at most meetings. Um, so I was not contacted. Speaking about teachers, I know, you know, there's always a shortage and everything like that, but also focusing on having biology teachers teach biology, English teachers teach English, special education teachers teach special education. Um, and the things that they're trained on could also lessen the number of students. But I know we have to do what we have to do right now, but working on getting teachers that can teach in their field, um, will help us. Now, um, what was on my card was, you guys offer cyber. We have a school, I'm speaking about the AP building, which is not safe. You offer cyber, but we also have restrictions when it come to what is offered and supported for our special education students. There is no support for special education students when it comes to cyber. So we have to make a choice to stay in the school that's unsafe. where they're not really focused too much on his academics because he's worried about everything else that's going on. And as a parent, I can't put my child in cyber or any other parents that may want to do cyber because I, my child and a lot of children, they may not use the services or may not have them daily, but knowing that that support is there gives them some sort of comfort. So to have to snatch that support from your child to try to protect them mentally and emotionally in a school where protection is not being provided is an issue. So thinking about 2023, 2024 school year, that definitely needs to be looked at. Special education support needs to be addressed when you are addressing cyber education. I am, I, like, I, I'm upset.
Could you explain specifically what you need for yours, for your child?
Not, yeah, I was ready to say, you know, when I come in here, I don't never just speak for my child, so I can't do that. And I'm not going to do that right now, but in this situation.
Yeah, how can we, how can we help? What was your question?
Signing up for cyber is what my child wanted and has been asking for weeks and months and since the beginning of the year. And I've encouraged him, and this is why I've been so adamant on in here in safety, in safety, in safety, because this is a concern. Even last week, for me to, at work, get, go on Instagram and Facebook, and I got a parent online, I do 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 da do da. I'm on my way to the school, though whoops some ass. That's how I found out it was an altercation at the school. Facebook, early in the morning, so y'all talking about kids getting woke up, being in bad moods. They stepping on the school ground, being shot by violence. So again, we got, we taking them small steps, but for me to have to make my child and any other parent have to make their child stay in the school, that's not safe because cyber doesn't offer the things that they may need or that safety net is an issue.
So they don't, they didn't offer you cyber at the, at all, is all this?
No, they do, they offer it. It's there for you, but if your child has any type of special needs or IEP or any of that, certain things are not supported right now. So going forward.
So what I'm saying is, your IEP is a federal doctor that supersedes this building.
Okay, and I'm willing to have that conversation, but from the information that I have right now, it's not something that's supported. So going forward, if a conversation can be had or that can be available for those students.
And if it's not supported, then they have to make it available for the students.
And again, I'm willing to have that conversation, but right now, today, my son is still going into their school to get his education. And then, I'm sorry, there was one other thing with behavior and discipline. But you did touch on it, if y'all could definitely look at the first offenses, because again, it didn't happen this year, but it happened right after the pandemic. Y'all didn't have any water in the cafeteria for my son to drink. He went to his locker and got suspended for getting a bottle of water. He was caught at his locker, getting the bottle of water out and was suspended.
And was this handled by administration when you followed up with them?
Oh, no, it wasn't handled at all. I, I sat in a meeting with the principal, and it wasn't handled. It was said that the board decided the discipline, and that's where it stood. With a suspension on my child's record for getting a bottle of water that the school didn't provide.
And Dr. Winder is going to follow up with you. Thank you. Margaret Bing.
Good evening.
Hello.
I know you all got my email. I'm going to touch on it. To those who reached out, I appreciate it. On the district's website, there's two statements, change the world and preparing scholars for the 21st century. The district's mission statement says, the mission of the Southeast Delco School District is to nurture, educate, and challenge students to become lifelong learners possessing knowledge, compassion, and a desire to serve the global community. The vision is the Southeast Delco School District fosters a student-centered learning environment in which students are problem solvers, informed decision-makers, as well as collaborative and cooperative learners. All students have power, have access to powerful technological tools which enable them to make connections between knowledge and understanding. And the stimulating atmosphere, access to information and communication with others is unlimited. This nurturing environment provides a quality education by which all of our students can achieve academic excellence. Well, my thing is this, this mess with the graduation and the numbers and the lack of communication and the lack of transparency to parents about what their student has, what they need, what these new guidelines are. I myself, I asked about this in January. I came back last month. I was not, I came back last month at the board meeting. I was not contacted until this week, Tuesday, about anything that I had talked about in February. That's very concerning in and of itself. I was then sent a document that was just a doctored up document that was given in January to my son, which is the same document, and I have the original document because I kept it because I'm trying to stay abreast of what's going on. I do want to thank Ms. Kaiser for reaching out and talking to me and those who I did talk to. You guys know who you are. But I do want to say, with everything that's happened with the pandemic and, you know, coming out of school and, and all of this, to be hit with this, this year and these seniors. I'm advocating for my son because I have a senior, so it's personally affecting me. But I'm going to tell you, these seniors that have come from kindergarten on up, I was at the K Center with them. I wiped noses and tied shoes and all of it. I'm vested in this, not just for my son, but for the community. I'm vested in this. And I know from working at the K Center and at DTS, the parents don't quite understand. If I'm having a hard time getting a grad, I know there are a lot of parents that don't understand this. You guys are going to have a day of reckoning when these parents don't understand that their child is not walking. They can look back at these videos and see that I've been up here, they can see that Ms. Monroe said she said something. You guys are going to have a day of reckoning with these parents when they find that their child does not, does not have the qualifications necessary to graduate. But paid ninety dollars per ticket for a prom, paid a hundred and twenty-five dollars for dues. That's a lot. That, that is very sad and disheartening because their senior year is very special. This is a very special time, trying to navigate what you want to do, what we going to plan and all of this stuff. And then to be hit with this in the fourth quarter with like five minutes left. This is not acceptable. There was no information about the SATs, which is part of the pathways. No information about the SATs came to parents. Not PSAT nor SAT. I checked with my son, I made sure that I didn't miss something, I checked with other parents. The information's not there, it's not being given out. And I do lay blame on a certain person, I do. Because it's under your watch that this, these children are failing. Yes, they have their own personal responsibility in their education, yes, parents have their own personal responsibilities for their children, but your mission statement says all of these wonderful things, but you're not backing it up. And that's a problem, and then you're not overseeing the person that's supposed to oversee to make sure that this is getting done. That's a problem. So when May comes and June comes around, it's going to be a problem. It's really going to be a problem because I'm scrambling to make sure that my child has met all the. If he didn't take the SAT, because I didn't have the information, and his path right now was not to go to college. There's an issue. Why would he take the SAT? If I'd have known that and had to, even had the information, I would have said, boy, take the test. It's not that I don't think that he could pass it, but if this, if we had the information in a timely manner, we could have made certain adjustments. You didn't give us a chance. The chance wasn't even given. So I'm speaking on behalf of myself and behalf of the community. Because you've messed up not only these seniors, but you've messed up juniors who are delayed with taking their testing and even sophomores who could have been taking the PSA, PSATs. This is an issue, and they are behind, and they're already behind, as are many children all over. But this is a major problem, and it's going to get bad before it gets, before it gets better.
Can I invite Mr. Vogt back to the mic? I just have, we have a question about the SAT specifically. Were, were parents notified regarding that?
Parents are notified, it's in the student handbook on page six, student parent handbook. It's provided.
But you sent out all these emails about taking Vogt or whoever you're talking about not getting locked up. This is, this is the stuff that they need, they need to graduate.
Right, so you know, you noted the. Right, so you, you noted the parent. Thank you. You noted the parent handbook, when it's, you know, six weeks or eight weeks before the SAT date where the family's notified.
No, they weren't, and we don't give the SATs here, however, we did give PSATs, I believe, of board members.
No, I don't mean here, but that the deadline is, is coming up and you can go, you know, across town to take the SATs.
I don't have access right here, but our guidance counselors have been communicating with our seniors and our staff from October. There's been emails regularly going out. I myself helped proctor the PSATs, I was here on that Saturday, and I know one of our board member's child took the PSAT.
It was given.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
So there was a miscommunication with this particular parent, is that what you're saying?
No, it's another card.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay. So the PSATs were given and you're saying that the. Right, and that the, the SATs were, families were notified.
It's on page six on our student handbook, yes.
Right, in addition to the handbook, your, were parents notified?
I can't, again, I don't have that information in front of me as far as what the guidance pushes out with regards that date, but I know we put flyers up about SAT as well. We're constantly in communication because we do have a percentage of students that do want to go to college. And even though some of our, a lot of colleges are, are making testing exempt, but there are some, and we're in constant communication with our students.
Okay, thank you. So, okay, was there another question for Mr. Vogt?
I have a question.
Okay.
You said there were flyers put up?
Yes, SAT all over the school.
SAT and PSATs.
Yes.
And the flyers started when?
From the beginning of the year, because those dates are, in the, in the parent student handbook, those are start from the very beginning of the year. And our guidance counselors do a very good job of letting them know which neighboring schools, if they do offer them, where they would have to go to take that test.
I have a, I have a question. Well, I have another question, but it's me, I like to keep the parents informed. If you go on Phila, P-H-I-L-A-S-D.org, the first thing on their website is ACT. I just want to make sure, ACT 58 state requirements, if you click on learn more, there's a one-page, parent-friendly checklist. This is why I told the board members and the constituents in October. So we're sitting up here trying to blame Mr. Vogt, you should be looking at these board members from the top down because it wasn't a priority. It has a checklist, it has videos. So I'm going to say it one more time, P-H-I-L-A-S-D.org has a parent-friendly letter, and I believe I gave it to somebody at Academy Park, but they didn't want to use it. And so whatever y'all got, I, I don't even know what it looks like. But whenever, as soon as you log into that page right now on your phone, that's the first thing that's on their district website. No, I don't want to see that, I don't want to see that. No, I don't want to see that.
Okay.
Did you have a question, Ms. Washington?
I was, I wasn't that answer, but.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Francesca Barley.
Hi, everybody, Francesca Barley. I just wanted to piggyback off a couple of comments that I heard tonight. Number one, I want to look forward to the next school year because I know things take a lot of time and, you know, and things are moving in the right direction, I would like to hope that. So I want to piggyback off Ms. Jenkins and just point a few things out that I think that we should really get implemented for next year that we've really dropped the ball on this year. And one of those things was what Margaret had said would be the PSAT and the SAT testing. As you know, I'm pretty sure I've said that, my daughter is probably number one in her class. She has started recently two clubs after school. She's very involved, I am very involved. I volunteered at the school dance, I did the snack tray, I am volunteering every time. Cardinal Point is thinking at this point, I'm just, you know, like, because I'm like bringing stuff in and doing stuff. So that's how much I'm there volunteering. So if I don't know about something, I'm telling you, no parents know about it. I'm also running the parents' page, I am pushing out information that is given to me on the regular. I am sharing Ms. Perry's stuff, we are sharing each other's stuff back and forth and trying to give out as much information. But when I tell you that PSATs were not communicated, I have a 10th grader who is top of her class, who did not take the PSATs this year, and I am so disappointed at that because she is a year behind now because that is a sophomore test. And so my question to you is, let's look proactively. I know in the past, PSATs have been given during the day in the school, like it was a whole class, like it was a whole thing. We did the test, it wasn't a Saturday. And it's not like I wouldn't have signed my daughter up. On the day that PSATs were given, I was volunteering at the homecoming game. So I was there and I had no clue that the test was going on. And also, like Ms. Bing said, it's also a pathway, those two scores, that SAT score is a pathway to graduation, that PSAT score is a pathway to graduation. Also, I know we don't give SATs, but could we possibly look into doing that next year? Like, maybe being a site for SAT testing? I know the people that I have contacted about, you know, missing the PSAT and that have been very helpful. But unfortunately, the PSAT is a one and done, like it's one time a year, you can't get it at any other site, you can't get it anywhere else. And honestly, my daughter could have been recognized to be one of those National Merit Scholars and been looked at if she had a PSAT score, but she does not have a PSAT score this year, and I cannot get her one. And that's time I, I can't get back, and it was because there was no Global Connect, there was no email. The flyers that go up around the school, and I can tell you from personal experience, I've just recently helped put flyers up around the school for, and half the flyers are ripped down, the kids rip them down, so flyers don't work all the time. I was told that the night news is not even played in third block like it's supposed to be. Like, all of the kids just told me in their last club that nightly news is supposed to be played at third block, and half the teachers aren't playing it. So those information, and then they're not hearing announcements. So I'm hoping that moving forward, we can just get information out better and faster. And like I said, same thing with Ms. Bing said. I am all for, you know, bringing guest speakers in, but I have gotten four Global Connects about Banky Pounds coming to talk about how not to get incarcerated, and that's very important, and I get it. But can we have four Global Connects about college pathways? And four Global Connects about PSATs that are so, so important? We can't just cater to the kids that need that conversation about not to get incarcerated. We have to cater to all of our students, and 90% of our students are good students. So I, I just want to let, like, the money, let's, we need to focus our money on the kids that want to learn and want to succeed as well. Like, let's spread it out evenly and let's start getting in competition with the rest of the county. Even Pennwood at this point looks better, like, they have SATs two times a year. Pennwood is looking better. So I want to be proactive and I want to hope that we're going in the right direction. So I want to be proactive, and I want to hope that we're going in the right direction. And once again, I'm like Ms. Bing and Ms. Jenkins. I'm not up here for my kid because I'm on top of my stuff, right? Um, I'm looking out for everybody else that doesn't know they can take these credits and doesn't know that they can do all this stuff. And that's why I'm here every meeting, and that's why I think it's so important. And I want to move forward with this district, and I think we can do things, but we just need to get it together. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Vog had a, had a comment.
I do have to take the mic because, um, I don't want misinformation out there, and, and hopefully, Ms. Barley, this is.
We are online.
Pardon? We are online, so I want to make sure, because misinformation unfortunately was just provided, and I need to correct that, okay? Um, because my son is a National Merit finalist, took it his junior year. So your daughter did not miss anything by taking it sophomore year. That is a junior year test. It is a. The PSAT is a junior year test. They take it their junior year, and they're evaluated their junior year. Again, my son is a National Merit finalist, one of fifteen thousand across the state. He is now a senior. It's the test when they take it, the PSAT only counts. My son started taking it in ninth grade, took it ninth, tenth. It only counts during your junior year. And that's very important for the parents that are listening tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Perry has a comment.
So just to be a little more clear, so I was the board member whose student took the PSAT that, um, the principal had mentioned. And I, I gotta be honest, I have a top student that pays attention to nothing. That is, that is who he is. He's an amazing student, but if he doesn't have to look at it, he's not looking at it. So in his Google Classroom, he has a counselor Google Classroom. He has a Class of Twenty Twenty Four Google Classroom. I'm just gonna tell you, he's not looking at them. So as a parent, the way I was informed about the PSAT was from a teacher who has advocated for my child since he's been in second grade. She reached out to me and said, hey, do you know this is happening at the high school? And to be fair, when I went to my kid and said, hey, did you know this? Oh, yeah, I saw it in Google Classroom. So he saw it. But I wasn't informed by a Global Call, I wasn't informed by a counselor. I was informed by the gifted support teacher.
Michelle McGowan.
I apologize for the sunglasses. I have a migraine that is unreal. What I am hearing is terrifying. I have an eighth grader. I have class dojo. And I swear to God, it's class dojo helps me to know what the hell is going on in school. I get updates on when great ones, assignments are due. I get updates on everything. And I am already having anxiety that he's about to graduate out of that. And now he's going to go into the black hole that is Academy Park. It is a communication black hole. And I can tell you this because I just had a daughter that graduated from Academy Park. And it would, if it, it would, it would be like, oh, if I happen to have a conversation with so-and-so, oh, did you know that this was going on? No, nothing is being told to me. I don't know. I was up here the other day, other week, went over to, there's a sign up there that tells you to sign up for the, uh, reminder so you can get the AP news. So I dialed the number, put the, the code in, doesn't work. Put the code in again to get A- AP updates. Don't even have a kid there, but I was like, you know what? Let me get ahead and start, ahead of this, let me start getting this information now. Doesn't work. Why? Why does the reminder app not work? Why do you have it listed up here on the board saying that it's gonna work? To get updates, can't get an update. PSATs, I don't care if it's a 10th grade test, if it's an 11th grade test, it's a test. It's a part of your pathways to graduate. It should be broadcast. And I don't care if you plop a sign on a wall, you paid for a website. Why is that website the most unhelpful thing I've ever seen? And don't try to access it on your phone. Because if you access it on your phone, you might as well kiss goodbye half of the functionality. You can't use it. I can't switch between schools, I can't do anything unless I go into view from desktop. It's garbage. You guys have the ability to give updates, live updates, right on that website. We have the technology. We are not using it. I can get Global Connects about the most random stupid things, but I can't get important updates? Why are we a district that focuses on negative behavior? I can hear about someone who wants to talk to kids about staying in school and, and, and making the right choices from jail. But I can't hear about, like, you know, important announcements for graduation purposes? I can't hear about positive things that are going on in the district? I'm not, where's that Global Connect? If anything, I'm half not listening because it's like, okay, my kid's not in trouble, I don't really care. Where are those? If you put a sign up on the wall, that should be a sign that is also on the website, period. I don't care what it is, if it's a flyer that you made and created, you have the ability to upload it. Upload every single one of those flyers so that a kid can't snatch it off the wall because a parent has already seen it. You have the technology, use it. Um, that's my rant on that because I am so terrified. Next year, I am going to be these poor parents. We're all going to be these poor parents, sitting here going, I don't know. I can tell you, I was at the eighth grade, uh, course selection. We, the blip about pathways was kind of like drinking from a fire hose. When you're getting there, you're trying to figure out about just straight course selection, and then someone is like, by the way, there's a lot of requirements that you're gonna also need to graduate, but don't worry about that right now, just. And it's like, wait, hold up, no. Stop, reorganize. There should be courses in this stuff for parents. There should be a ninth grade parent meeting, not just a message, an actual meeting. We come to the school, we ask the questions, we meet the people and say, hey, what do I need to do? What do I need to know in ninth grade? What do I need to know in 10th grade? Hey, yeah, you're not gonna get a lot of people there always, but just start small. You start anyway. For those twenty, thirty, fifty, sixty people that do show up, hey, they're gonna, no. Don't give up. Um, I, I want, the biology part scared me. If we have a test that only a tiny percentage can pass, but the rest of them can pass the course, how on earth are they passing a course that they can't even pass a test about the course that they just took? How? How can you have a, how can you have people coming out of that class and you're going, you're successful? We're not pushing you along. I mean, obviously, we, you got the material. You can't pass the test. Yeah, well, okay, well, what can you do? And then tell them, oh, yeah, take it next year. I can't take the test next year, I barely learned it the first year. That, this is not helping anyone, and it's getting terrifying because the numbers are going the wrong way. Um, please, let's look into this. But the biggest thing that I wanted to come up, we're still teaching MLA as the citation preference. We're heavily teaching that and pushing that and getting the kids standardized to, you need to learn MLA, 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 MLA. My kids entered college and went, what the hell is Chicago? What is APA? What is this nonsense? And every other kid there picked it up and they were rolling with it. Why are we still, and APA is the hot, is the most common. Why are we, why are we teaching old stuff? Why are we not evolving with the times? Check with the colleges. We're not teaching, we're not getting these kids ready. Madison said to me, why did I even bother? That, no, I'm not ready at all. She struggled most of the first semester of her first year in college trying to catch up with everyone else. And it's not even about, like, we don't have the teachers for it. This one is, we got the teacher, they're teaching the wrong thing. So now we need to look at our standards and start fixing this stuff from the begin. We should be teaching that there is more than one way to citeate sources. It, it should just be in the curriculum. That's my, my rant.
Sean Thomas.
Good evening, everybody, how you doing? Good to see you, I ain't seen you in a while. Um, stop, stop. Um, again, thank y'all for the, uh, the assembly happened in March twenty-first. Um, I only brought that up or presented that because, you know, I heard about the, the problems y'all were having, like the violence stuff and maybe weapons was bring, being brought into the school. So that's why I came with that idea, um, to try to correct some of those issues. Um, so, you know, we can't do everything at once, but we gotta pick something. So I just picked that, you know, and start there, and we can start to build from there, you know? Um, my only problem is now is, uh, the way, the way it was rolled out. Um, the heading of the way it was rolled out was, you know, um, we speaking about making good decisions, period. You know, but it said, making good decisions so you won't end up incarcerated. I didn't like that. That's almost like you wanted to sabotage my effort. You know, why do high school children need a permission slip to go downstairs in the school? We're not taking them off the campus to the zoo or nothing like that. They just going in the auditorium where they always go for presentations. You understand what I'm saying? So I feel like you're trying to sabotage or self-sabotage yourself, you know, in our efforts to clean this thing up. You know, um, this is what I picked to do, you can pick something, which, whatever you do, I don't have any problem with that. But it seem like now, it's like, you know, we're going to say yes, but really we saying no. So we start to build things around it to discourage everybody from getting involved in this thing. You know, until you have another incident, then you be crying again, saying, oh, somebody help us. But when the help come, you talk crazy about the help, or you sabotage the help. I, that's the part I just don't understand, I don't get that part. You know, taking time out of my busy life to come here. You know, I know, I don't, I don't run this thing, it's people probably taking control of this thing I never hear of, never see that make the real decisions on this thing. You know, but I'm, I'm coming here to try to help out. You know, I'm smelling like egg rolls and chicken right now, I'm coming, my kids ain't seen me, but I'm here with y'all trying to be here with the community. You know, but I know some of these children don't have families, so how we gonna have a community when some of them don't even have families? You can't expect none outside the house, that ain't happening inside the house. You understand? But this thing, March twenty-first, is about making good, every bad decision doesn't land you in jail. So I don't understand how we coupled those words together. You know, that was, that was just like, that was, to me, that was nasty. You know, and now I hear about this thing in school where they kind of doing like a get out of jail free card. Like, if you mess up in school, uh, we won't give you detention if you just go to the auditorium and hear this man talk about jail. No, that's ain't. I'm trying not to get emotional right now, right? So now is the thing going around the school that if you get in trouble in school, in exchange for the consequence or whatever you did, we just gonna send you to the auditorium to hear this, this guy talk about jail. This guy is coming from Virginia to talk about life. Life with these children that need to hear it. You know, no disrespect, but it ain't nineteen sixty, seventy, or eighty. These kids going through something, and they ain't really trying to hear what y'all trying to kick in their ear. They want to hear from somebody real that's been through it, they want to hear something else. See, school is free, it's online, YouTube University, they can go there and get it without you, without sitting in the classroom. Everything, you, just gonna take you an hour, it's gonna take them three seconds on Google. It's different now. Whether you like it or not, whether you want to pivot with it or not, it's different now. It's totally different than what you grew up doing. And you, but you got to accept that and be able to pivot and change with it. Yeah, his background is that he been to prison, he got two life sentences plus a hundred years. It got reduced to thirty-three and he got out, but he can really tell them something to change their mind, to change their mindset to make them realize why they need to listen to the teachers and the principals and their parents. To say, I was gonna make a bad decision because he just made one. Before that, he was a straight A student. His mama didn't think he would, needed anybody to talk to him about jail or about making good decisions because he was already making them until the day he decided with his friend to make one bad one that got him two life sentences. First offender. I know everybody think they kid is a good kid and what they don't need, until they need it, and it, but it's too late for them to get it now. Everybody want to think, my kid don't need to hear this bull crap and blah, 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 my kid need to hear this, that, and the third. No, they need to hear it too. But this, this is like, this, this is craziness what happened in this room, week after week, month, with, yeah, we don't get nothing done really here. We don't get nothing, we keep, while we keep meeting, we don't never get nothing done. We wasting everybody's time, just don't look like you productive and, and you ain't getting nothing done really. But we just want to look like we doing something, but really, we ain't really, we don't really want to do anything for real. Huh? Yeah, yes. Mm-hmm. What we doing really, man? We really trying to help these children? Or we just want to look like we doing something? I advise you to send all of the children there on March twenty-first. All of them, it should be mandatory. As much as y'all talk crazy about them and, 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 man. I can't walk away from y'all, I can't walk away from these children. I can't do it. They just gonna have to kill me like they did everybody else before I just walk away from y'all. Because they need us. But we so busy with our lives and what we want to do, we, we ain't even recognizing them. Until the, the, the noise is just too loud. What your kid doing when you don't hear him? Dad, 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 they raised the level, and gotta call you eight times before you, huh? They trying to, when they, do this for me, every teacher in here, please do this for me. The next time y'all have a fight in the school, take both the kids to different rooms, give them a book, and let's see if they can read. I'm willing to bet my money they can't read past the third grade level. These kids ain't even proficient in reading and math. You want to know where the violence is coming from? These ninety-seven percent of all prisoners can't read past the third grade level. I guarantee you, I bet my life on it, if you took them, that, don't suspend them, take them to different rooms and just buy them some donuts, everything, then slide a book in front of them, say, read this for me. I guarantee you, they, give them the book on their level, ninth grade, tenth grade. The boy, this girl can't read, I know why they so. Then give them some math, oh, they can't do math. You can't fix a problem unless you know the, the nature of it. If you don't qualify to fix the problem, leave it alone. Just be honest and say, I don't qualify for that. But everybody want to act like they qualify to, that they can, excuse me.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
This is crazy, man. Don't worry about, I'm guaranteeing you, these kids can't read, man. I do this for a living. I got the receipts to prove it, that what I do work throughout the community. I've been doing this, and I've been doing it for free for over fifteen years, I'm forty-two. I'm guaranteeing, and everybody think they kid is, well, you supposed to think the word about your kid, but I prove to mothers and fathers for fifteen straight years, your kids can't do this, that, and the third, this is why this is happening.
And that's why we're bringing him to the, to the district.
Yeah, I just don't want this to be sabotaged with the way it rolled out with all of these. Yeah, so he gonna come all the way here, we gonna pay him his money, put him up in the hotel, all of that, and there's gonna be five people in there.
Well, how about, hold on, let's.
It's not what this is about.
We're not sure who form, can I be honest? We're not sure who formulated the narrative. The narrative was presented. But at this point. No, no, we're talking about the narrative that was formulated around the guests.
I just want to say this before I walk away. I respect everybody in here. I don't have a beef with nobody in here, even though I know a couple of y'all in here don't like me and got a problem with me. I don't have a problem with nobody in this room. Because if you showed up, I think that you want to help and you want to fix it if you showed up. Right? But maybe you might've showed up as a spy, I don't know. You might just want to hear what we talking about so you can take it back and. You might just want to hear what we talking about so you can take it back and sabotage it like you doing me right now. But I don't have a problem with nobody here. That's why I'm here. I swear for Lord, I was sitting at the dinner table, my wife, uh, texted somebody in the room and said, hey, y'all still there? She said, yeah, my food at, still at the table getting cold. I jetted out the door to come here to say this. I know that's right. Me, you can have my food because it's, I hate it. But we gotta, you know, we gotta get some energy about ourselves. We gotta...
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Thank you for that.
I thank y'all so much for even allowing it to happen. But now let's don't, let's not sabotage it and then make it look bad. We want to make it look good so we get the results that it work, and then we could travel and say, hey, this what AP did. Let's do, get some of that AP juice over here at Martin Luther King High School or whatever other high school.
Absolutely.
You know what I'm saying? Thank y'all. Hey, y'all stay here.
I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. Um, we have our upcoming meetings, School Board Business Thursday, March twenty-third, twenty twenty-three at seven PM. Our next committee of the whole is April twentieth, twenty twenty-three at six PM. And our following school board meeting in Aug, in April is April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three at seven PM. We hope to see you then. Thanks for joining us.